Good morning. My computer is indicating that it's nine o'clock. And so I will, at this time, call to order the special meeting of the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners for April 26, 2022, to discuss the capital improvement projects and the ARPA funds. So all five commissioners are present, and I would ask you to all stand and be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by our county manager, Patrick Kates.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Patrick. Public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left, and you should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. We have two items on the agenda today, so public comment will be taken on both of those. Generally, we ask that you limit your public comments during the opening public comment to items that are on the agenda. However, out of respect for those of you in the audience that do work, we would allow you the three minutes during opening public comment to comment on either of the two agenda items if you choose to do so, understanding that if you choose to do so, you will be forfeiting your three minutes when that item does come before the Board of Commissioners. I hope that's clear. We appreciate you respecting that. In addition to that, my phone is ringing, but you can't hear it because I have it on silent mode, and I would ask you also to respect others in the audience and also silence your electronic devices. When you approach the podium, we ask you to state your name and sign in for the record so that we can get that done. So at this time, opening public comment will be taken.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Is this on? Yes. Good morning, Commissioner Gardner, Commissioners. Tammy James, avid pickleball player. I am here today in support of the pickleball complex that is on the agenda, and I apologize, I cannot stay for the entire meeting to answer any questions that might come up during that process. Pickleball has increased in popularity over 25% in the last two years. Obviously, we understand that's because of COVID, the pandemic. But just so you know, you can show up any day of the week, Monday through Friday, at the community center, and the gymnasium floor is taken up with four courts, all pickleball, and people waiting in line to play. With me today is a group of people that wanted to actually show support also. I also have to give recognition to Lisa Coffrin. She could not be here today. That is why I am standing up and speaking today. She has rallied all of us to come forward in appreciation of your consideration for this project. Pickleball complex is needed here in Douglas County. We currently set up on basketball courts. We set up in the community center, but there is no designated pickleball courts in Douglas County. As a retired person, and granted, pickleball is not just for seniors. It started probably that way, but now it is moving into the schools, elementary. If you have not played pickleball, I invite you to come out and join us. We'd be happy to show you, give you a paddle, play a couple games. At this time, I think the CIP is for a recommendation of a feasibility study for the first year, fiscal year 22. $10,000 to make sure it's feasible for us to build this kind of complex in Douglas County and the use. Also, we'd like to thank Scott Morgan for finding a location. That's half the battle right there, is finding property where we could build a complex that had the capabilities of expanding too. At this time, I would just like to say that there are quite a few people in the audience that would like to come up and at least just show their support and have their name entered into the record if you'll accommodate that. Not sure if it will do any good, or if the CIP is being approved as submitted by finance, I don't know, but really, we're all here just to say we're passionate about pickleball. We really like to see this complex built. And I understand that's my time up. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something real quick?
Actually, you had about 30 more seconds when the light turns red, didn't we?
Oh, God, it's been a long time.
My 17-year-old daughter is a big pickleball fan, and she says she can kick anybody's butt out there, so.
We welcome that challenge. We'll send Steve Noble out for that challenge. All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. The other pickleball fans that are here, do you also need to return to work, or do you wish to enter public comment during the time when we entertain that, during the commenting period, when the CIPs come?
Hi, Elaine Grant, and I'm a recent person to move here. And within six months, we moved from Palm Springs, which is pickleball heaven. And one thing we had to do was see where was pickleball happening, you know? Was it? And we looked at Reno and all the, and we ended up, when we saw the rec center and met some of the people, we thought, this is where we belong. However, you need outdoor courts badly, so please consider that. It's very important to us to be able to play year-round, not just, you know, here and there. And then the rec center's closed on Sunday, and we were just talking to somebody, yeah, where do we go on Sundays, you know, because we're all into it. It's like, in our blood, we play, most of us play almost every day, and we love it and enjoy it, and that's why we moved here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional? If, to facilitate this quicker, if you want to line up against the wall and just proceed to the microphone, that would be appropriate.
Good morning. I'm Ellen Lucas, Commissioners. I just want to say I support the pickleball complex and hope it does happen.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. New to the valley, my wife Elaine just.
Please state your name for the record.
Stephen Grant, sorry, from Gardenville. And my wife just spoke about why we moved here, and I'm here just to support that project at the community center, and again, invite you all to come out and join us and play. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Steve Noble. Thank you for hearing all of us today. I'm also in support of the pickleball complex here. You're going to hear a number of things that are going to be repetitive, so I'm trying not to address those, but I will like to inform you of a few things that are going on in our local adjacent communities. I received an email from Dave Whitefield last night. Dave was instrumental in developing eight outdoor new pickleball courts in Carson City. And his email states as following, "The Carson City Board of Supervisors has approved for the funding and construction of new pickleball complex. The Carson City Parks and Recreation Department, per Parks Director Jennifer Burgess, have agreed to a tentative location for our new pickleball courts. The number of courts and amenities is unknown at this time. However, we are hoping to build at least 12 additional courts with provisions for expansion for up to as many as 24 courts." And they go on to say about the fencing and a number of the other items as well. A couple of the people who spoke just prior to me indicated that they moved to this area. Not only do we have the scenic beauty and the weather and the beautiful amenities that we see here, but this facility is needed in our community. It is an attraction. People will want to live here if there are sports activities like this. And I do accept your daughter's challenge. Thank you.
Good morning.
Fighting words.
Good morning. My name is Ben Venegas. I'm a resident of Minden. I moved here seven years ago. Pickleball didn't exist here, but I've been an avid addict of pickleball now for well over 15 years. So I don't want to belabor and support everything that Tammy said and Steve said. Just want to let you know that pickleball appeals to all ages, not just seniors. So if you build it, they will come. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Andrew Rollins. I moved here from Florida in 2012. I was pretty much one of the first pickleball players to play in the community center because it was built shortly after that. And I've seen pickleball grow tremendously, and we have a lot of support, and we have a lot of interest, and I would greatly appreciate your consideration and approval of the plan for our new pickleball complex. Thank you.
My name is Sam Steele. I'm a resident of the community and a pickleball player, although I've played tennis for four years in high school, and I played 30 years of racquetball. Pickleball is now the sport of choice. There are many factors concerning pickleball. It's the fastest-growing sport in the country right now, and you can find lots of data supporting that kind of information, but I think it appeals to all ages. I have two teenage granddaughters that are playing pickleball in high school up in Reno, so it's not just us retired people that come out and play pickleball. There's a whole new generation starting to take that up, okay? It's great indoor and outdoor exercise. We have a recreation department. Its job is to provide recreation, and this is a great recreation activity for all ages across. I look at the skate center you built, and it is really used, and it's a great outdoor activity for kids to meet at. And this is what I look at is the pickleball thing. You're providing a great source of recreation, outdoor activity for lots of the community. When I go on vacation, I used to not think too much about pickleball. It wasn't that important. I was a ski bum for a lot of years, and so now all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we're going to go to St. George. Where can we stay that have pickleball courts attached to the facility? Oh, we're going to go up to Clamath Falls. Where are the pickleball courts in Clamath Falls? It's become part of our recreational plan, and I see that as something that draws to our business community here. If we have pickleball courts available to vacationers, it's a good reason for them to come here and visit and spend their money. They're spending their recreational dollars to come to our community to recreate. So I think that's a big point. Pickleball's a social sport. We've played at Lampy Park, and people come out, and we're out there playing, and they just walk up, and sure, they can come and play. It doesn't require any, you know, pre-registration, lots of intense equipment. All of us, most all of us, have just basically walked up and started learning to play from other people who are willing to play. So it's very social, very open, very active operation. So I really support that kind of thing, where lots of the members of the community can meet new members of the community and interact all the time and form a social gathering, both during the day and in the evening. With these courts being possibly lit at night, you'll have people out there playing. I used to play tennis at nine o'clock at night because it was cool, cooler in the evening than it was during the day. So those are the things that I think are really important, approving this project, that it offers a lot to the community. I support the part, after looking at all the different maps, the one that's part of the rec center on the south side of the building area there, and I would like to see all the amenities that go with that picnic tables, maybe some housing and stuff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I would remind you, you're not required to take three minutes, okay? Just an observation.
Good morning. My name is May Hyatt. I'm a resident of Minden. I'm here as a testament that it isn't just for retired folk. I'm 46. I have a 10-year-old that goes to Pinion Hills. I have a 15-year-old that goes to Douglas High. I actually learned about pickleball from my 15-year-old freshman at Douglas High School. He actually learned about it through his PE program. His PE teacher taught him about it, and when I went to my doctor, she said, you know what, your A1C is getting kind of high. You've got high blood pressure. You're starting to develop hypertension. You need to develop some exercise. So I went down to the community center. I met a lot of these lovely folks, and they taught me how to play pickleball. I just learned how to play a month ago, and I'm hooked. In the past month, my A1C has gone down, my blood pressure's gone down, and I've lost six pounds just playing pickleball. So I'm here to, you know, encourage you guys to consider this pickleball facility because even though I'm only 46, I want to be playing as long as these lovely people have been playing and for many, many years to come. So even until I'm 86, or even longer than that. So please take it into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Kathy Welsh, Nevada-born and raised, fairly new to pickleball, but I love it. My grandkids play, and I just encourage you to support us because it's can't be beat.
Why can't it be beat?
Good morning. My name's Debbie Priest. I'm a Gardenville resident, and I support pickleball. I'm also a new player, but I got the challenge already from my eight-year-old grandson. So he's not out there yet, but he'll take a challenge pretty soon. Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Robert Giratt. I'm a 19-year resident of Douglas County, and I'm just here to support any pickleball programs that, you know, any programs that can increase or enhance the sport of pickleball in Douglas County. So thanks for your consideration.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Judy Smith. I'm pretty close to the oldest one that plays pickleball over here. I'll be 80 in a couple weeks. My doctor's so happy that I am doing this. My bone density has improved. I can move. I still run. Everyone needs this. We'll have a healthier community the more people we get out there to play. Thank you.
I'm Patty Snyder, and thank you for your support, or hopefully support of our pickleball community. And just what everybody said, it keeps us old folks feeling younger, and it brings the young kids in, getting off their fannies and, you know, away from their tech stuff. So I hope you'll consider. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Judy Ferguson. We moved to Minden two years ago and bought property, and I love this town. So I think pickleball would be an asset. So thank you.
Thank you. Is that our clipboard? So I just wanted to make sure we're not going to lose our clipboard this morning. So, okay. And I, so I also know that Sheriff Coverley is here, and I know he had, or I understood he had a meeting, and he had comments regarding some of the ARPA funds. Is that correct? You're not here for pickleball, right?
I love pickleball.
That's, you know, you're, you know, yeah, he's running for reelection, so of course he would say that. So just an observation.
Commissioners, Chairman, thanks for the opportunity to get up here a little early. You can get back to some other things I got to do. Regarding the items that the Sheriff's Office submitted for the ARPA fund, these are items that we feel that we can utilize. They are not necessarily needs that I can't live without. They're wants. They're items that we're always looking for, funding in various ways, and this was an option that came up, and so why we submitted them how we are. The biggest asset that I have is never equipment and brick and mortar. It's the men and women that work for me, the personnel that I have. That's my biggest asset, and they make the biggest impact into the community. So funding them is probably my biggest priority, always, but equipment and projects, you know, are important, too. I also want to thank Terry Willoughby and her office. She's excellent to work with and helps us with all of our finance needs, including this, and I think that she's an excellent steward of the county's money, and is very thoughtful in her process and what she recommends and so on and so forth. So I appreciate the help that she puts in and the hard work, and I know that you guys do, too. So thank you very much. No matter what you guys decide, I'm with you 100%, and I know that you support the Sheriff's Office, and that is very important to me, and I appreciate it very much. So thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it. Appreciate you and your department, what you keep in our community safe. So since seeing no other public comment here in chambers, I will, at this time, go to public comment online. Ms. Johnson, is there any comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay. Mr. Engels, you had something?
Last Saturday, there was a terrible accident on 395 and Airport Road. Two young ladies were involved with a accident, and does the DA's office have this case? Is it Endot who's doing the investigation? Huh?
I think it's Endot.
Well, anyway, I don't know the details. Two young ladies were involved, and one was killed. The other one is in ICU up in Reno. Don't know a lot of the details. Drunk driver going the wrong way, and the father was in church on Sunday. The poor guy is, he was just numb with grief. So there's not many details coming out yet, but it's just an unbelievable tragedy that took place, and their lives were changed in an instant. So be careful out there.
Thank you, Mr. Engels. Since seeing no other public comment, we've both done in chambers and online, we will, at this time, go into the approval of the agenda. I did want to indicate that the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022, '23, which is listed as item number two on the agenda today, is required for us, wow, is required for us in order to present our budget on time to the state. So it's, and the ARPA funds can be spent over time. So with that in mind, I'm going to take the prerogative to move item two to item number one, and we'll discuss the CIPs in advance of the ARPA funds. So at this time, I would ask for approval of the agenda based on that change.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda based upon those changes.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice, to approve the agenda with the movement and replacement of item two to item one. So since seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, so we'll go now into the administrative agenda. I'll be reading the agenda item into the public record, and we've already moved it. So at this time, I'll call on for possible action, discussion to approve the Douglas County five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2022, '23 through '26, '27. I think it's important for us to understand when we do this that we're actually, as I understand it, Ms. Willoughby, only really approving the expenditures for the '22, '23 fiscal year. Is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, yes, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the introduction.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you very much. And I notice. And I notice Ms. Jenny Cartwright is with you here today also, so welcome.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. And I have Jenny Cartwright, my finance manager, here. She will actually be going through the presentation. I wanted to give some, a little introduction to what a CIP, or capital improvement, plan is. And it's really a look forward. We want to get every project that could possibly happen in the next five years into this document, so we can start planning, we can look for financing. I know when I see something, maybe I could combine some projects together and look for funding opportunities. We don't want to have a surprise. I should never have a project pop up in the middle of the year that isn't on this document. And that's the goal, and we're working with the departments to really move that forward. So a lot of it, why do we do this, is, again, so you have an idea what's coming. The board, the public knows projects that are out there that might be five years out. Some organizations do even longer CIPs, but we do a five-year to start. But we want to give the public a good idea of what some of the pending issues and big projects that might be, they might see coming forward, and funding up issues that we may be experiencing. And the comment was made in public comment that finance submits this CIP. And while we submit it to the board for this meeting, it's not our CIP. We just merely gather the information. And I really want to thank our department heads and budget contacts, who really worked hard on this. To put this document together, we've worked hard over the last few years to get, when they're submitting CIPs to other agencies, like to FAA, we want to make sure that our CIP matches that. It's pretty easy. So we're really working together to get this a more comprehensive document, and to look forward to give the people information, like schematics, maps, drawings, pictures, that make the projects more relevant to them. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny, and she can go through the details.
Thanks, Terry. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jenny Cartwright, Finance Manager, for the record. Today, I'm going to walk us through the CIP packet. I do want to point out that we also have representing departments available, should the board have any questions. People are either in the room or available on Zoom. So I will share my screen here, so we can move through this together. And there is a handout. Since this is a little small, you do have a replacement handout that hopefully is a little easier to read. Let me see. So, starting out, we have...
And sorry, Terry, sorry to interrupt. Terry Willoughby, for the record, and it is correct. Only the first year will be rolled into the budget and actually budgeted for fiscal year '22, '23. You'll also see some projects that are listed as unfunded. And so those will be, as funding becomes available, the projects can be approved, and then we would come back to you with funding later. That's it. Thank you.
May I ask a question before you go any further, though? So the funds that you have in the CIP, they are all allocated for those indicated that they are all funded, so that would mean that with the addition of these items, our budget would still be balanced. Is that a correct statement?
Jenny Cartwright, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So to start with, we have the airport projects. There are 13 projects presented for your approval today. You can see that they are primarily grant-funded, with some use of reserves. And in the case of the first project, operating revenue. So a quick summary of these projects. There is a construction of a portion of taxiway Z, an upgrade to the airport terminal building, design for the future construction of the east side aircraft apron, rehabilitation of taxiways. You'll see this as a theme throughout. Hangar taxi lanes.
So, Ms. Cartwright, I'm sorry. Can I ask a question here also, before we get too deep into this? It's my thought process is that we look at each department individually, and then ask Commissioners for questions in that regard. And then perhaps we can approve the departments as we go along? Would that be an appropriate method of doing this?
Jenny Cartwright, yes, I think that would absolutely be appropriate.
Okay, so we'll stop at the end of each one of these and ask for questions from the board. And then we'll look at a tentative approval of that particular area. Okay? Thank you.
So for the board's approval for the airport, there are a little over $4 million in fiscal year '22, '23 funding. As I said, primarily from grants that would come to the board as they are received, along with some use of reserves.
And again, Terry Willoughby, for the record, just because you approved the budget doesn't mean you're going, not going to see the grants and the projects as they come up. You would see those again, even though they're budgeted.
Okay. So do we, at this time, do we want to ask the board if they have questions in this regard? The reserves here, these are airport restricted funds that are coming out of those reserves?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, yes, those would strictly be funded out of the airport fund.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions in regards to the allocations for the airport? I'm going to give each time to peruse it, so... And one additional observation is none of this is coming out of the general fund. Is that right?
Jenny Cartwright, yes, that's correct. For the airport, it is its own fund, funded from there.
Commissioner Engels, any questions? Mr. Noah said? No? No? Okay. Okay, so tentatively...
I think it's wonderful. We can fund the projects you want with the capital grants and the reserves, and it isn't affecting the rest of the budget. That's really great.
Okay. I don't... Mr. Ritchie, do we need to have individual public comment on each of these areas? Okay, so it's, even though it'd be a tentative vote, it would still... Because we'll have a vote at the end to approve those. Okay, so anyways, at this time, then, I'll open public comment on any of the airport items. Do we have any in chambers on any of the airport items? Since seeing none, Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online regarding the airport items?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to, bring it back to the board, and entertain a motion to tentatively approve the airport budget.
I would assume that you're making a motion to include all of these items within the airport.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, unless you have a problem with one of them. So, no, okay.
I'll make a motion to tentatively approve all of these items in the airport budget.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Engels. Since seeing, you ready to vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, so that's, we can move on to the second item. It's five oh, vote.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record. Next, we have seven projects submitted by Community Development. You'll notice that the fiscal year '22, '23 amounts are requested in the ARPA funding, so you will see that coming forward in the next presentation as well. And then the remainder of the projects are unfunded at this time. But as CFO Willoughby mentioned, these are in here in, so that we know what these projects are, and if funding becomes available, we can allocate accordingly. The Community Development Department is within the general fund, so I would point that out. And there's a total of $307,500 in the fiscal year '22, '23 request to basically do some preliminary work and get a lot of these projects in the evaluation and pre-design stages.
Mr. Cates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out that I think funding some of these, this preliminary work, is very important. All of these projects that are listed are potential projects for state infrastructure spending, maybe even state ARPA spending. Those funds are going to come online over the next five years. And I think doing any preliminary work that we can do, this board could fund, will really help that effort. And again, we were looking at ARPA funding for some of that, but that's entirely up to the board.
Mr. Commissioner Tarkanian?
No one on this board is more in favor of the trails than I am. And, but I had questions on how this ARPA money is being funded. And just getting a packet three or four days before the meeting, I called you yesterday to try to answer some questions. I didn't hear back from you. I don't see how we can, how I can vote on allocation of ARPA funds until I have a better idea of what, on a number of questions, which we can go through. It would take more than the day if we were going to do it in an open meeting deal. So, I mean, I'm not sure. So I guess my question is, can we approve this work without having to allocate it through ARPA? Or does it have to come through ARPA, and we have to take a vote on that today?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, at this point, we have community development staff who are available to answer questions on the project as they were submitted as part of the five-year CIP. Because they are general fund projects, there is no funding available. We recommended them for ARPA, because it would give an opportunity to get the projects ready. The funding for the first year of all these projects is feasibility studies and some design work. But we would certainly, they would remain unfunded, and we would have to find additional money through reducing something else in the general fund or looking for additional revenue in the general fund. It would remain unfunded.
So again, you know, I've only been on the board 14 months, so there's a lot. I'm still trying to learn about how these things are funded and everything. I think it would have been better if someone had met with each, like we do, our two-on-ones before meetings, had gone through some of this stuff. We could have asked some of those questions there. I mean, I don't want to go through everything. I have questions on each one of these, because we would be here way past today. But some of these things, like utility extensions, sewer extensions, can't they be used from some of the restricted funds instead, for the feasibility studies, and not have to go through the ARPA funds?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, they cannot be used from the general fund restricted funds. Primarily, those are restricted for court funds, court fines that are restricted for certain purposes, so we can't use them for this. I would invite community development staff up to talk about some of these projects and talk about those monies.
I quite understand. You said from general restricted funds, but aren't there restricted funds for the sewer work and so forth, public utilities and stuff?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I believe these are not connecting to our utility funds. They are outside utilities.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions that I would like to have been able to, done before this meeting.
Mr. Cates?
I just wanted to point out, like, the Pineview Estates sewer extension, that would be a connection to Minden-Gardnerville Water and not Douglas County Utilities. We have infrastructure in the north side of the county, up at the lake, and a bit at the west side. But down south, it's probably Minden-Gardnerville Water, or in some cases, Gardnerville Rancho, GID.
Okay. So an observation I have, Ms. Willoughby, is that these funds that we're requesting out of ARPA today for the Community Development Department, we can allocate those feasibility studies out of ARPA without necessarily approving the entire ARPA budget that has been presented to us today. So we can, so what you're basically asking, Community Development is actually asking $307,500 out of the ARPA funds that are dedicated to community development to look into the feasibility of these particular projects. So if we approve this particular section, we're not approving the entire ARPA funds, just the feasibility studies, to see if we want to even possibly go forward with these at a later date, understanding that those are unfunded. Those will not be funded through ARPA funds, and we would have to find other sources of funding if the feasibility study came back to us and said, these are realistic. Is that...
Terry Willoughby, for the record, that is absolutely correct. The only portion that was submitted for ARPA was the first year feasibility studies. They would need to come, the Community Development Department would need to come back to, with a good feasibility study and say, we want to move forward with this project, and we would like to continue on, and we have funding available for it. So we would approve the rest of the project later. You could certainly pull these out of the five-year CIP, if that's the board's desire, and we can bring it back as an additional item later. You have a number of options. What, I can tell you a little bit about the process. We looked at, evaluated the five-year CIP first. I directed departments, particularly departments in the general fund, that if they had long-term needs, if there were items in the capital improvement plan that were unfunded, to submit them as part of the ARPA submissions to, because we have that, it's one-time money. It's an appropriate use for that. So that's how they ended up on the ARPA. But again, it's not approving the entire project, no.
All of these projects, as I look at it, are not necessarily county projects. They're working with other entities within our county. And so that would require coordination with those other entities. Is that correct?
I would direct those questions to Tom Delair, the director of the unit.
We have Community Director Tom Delair with us today, so maybe he can answer that question.
Tom Delair, Community Development Director, for the record. And yes, Chairman Gardner, you're correct. Some of these are, if you'd like, the Pineview Sewer Extension. MGSD is in the process of doing the design right now, using, utilizing RCI in order to do that extension to serve Pineview. I'm sure Pineview is going to need a, some sort of lift station from their facility to get up over the hill, out of China Springs, out of the valley where China Springs Road comes off of, off of the highway. And this sewer line is going to go right past Ruinstruth. And Ruinstruth is a high-nitrate sewer area, where it's being served today by wells and septics. It's been a concern of nitrate levels for some time in the groundwater. And having a feasibility study look at what size, and make sure that the pipe that goes in is adequate to serve that area. It is in their service area, and we are working with MGSD on that.
Mr. Chairman?
We've reached out to...
Commissioner Tarkanian?
So again, I'm certainly not, I don't think the board is questioning the need for this. I'm just trying to figure out if there's other funds, particularly restricted funds, that could be used for, instead of having to go through the ARPA funds. And you mentioned, when you use abbreviations, I'm lost. I'm sure the rest of the county's lost, too. RCI, what does that mean?
Yeah, sorry, Resource Concepts, Inc. They're a design firm out of Carson City, Nevada.
Commissioners, Commissioner Engels?
I don't know if this is the proper category. I'm just trying to find out if this is in here anywhere, or has even been brought forward. During the fires, it was noted that out at the animal shelter, they are using electricity to run their dryers for the rags and stuff that they have to clean. And they are using it for hot water tanks. They're using it for keeping the place warm. But there's a nat gas line, apparently, that goes out all the way on the dump road. And there was some discussion about doing some research to see if they could tie into that. Did that ever come forward?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I don't have information on that, but I can follow up with facilities and the animal shelter on that for you.
Okay. Commissioner Rice, anything? Commissioner Noah said? Okay. So at this time then, we'll go to public comment on the Community Development Section of the CIPs. Is there any public comment here in chambers regarding this section? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay. Bring it back to the board then. Is there any feelings of what we want to do with this particular item, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, if I read this correctly, what we're talking about is allocating $300,750 for the feasibility studies. Is that correct?
That's, that's the way I understand it. Out of, out of the, out of the ARPA funds. So as I understand it, this, we do have some ARPA funds that have already been committed? No, we do not.
Terry Willoughby for the record, we have, yes, we've committed a small part, but not for these projects.
Right.
So at this point, it would be either your, at this part of the meeting, we're approving the project concept so that we would talk about the funding in the next item.
Right.
So you could approve the projects as unfunded and then we would approve the funding during the next item, if that's the board's desire, or don't approve any of the projects.
Okay. I'll make a. Dix. Okay, motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the Community Development Engineering portion of the CIPs to the tune of $307,500 out of the ARPA funds. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Okay. So we'll go to the next section, County Construction, is that right?
Terry Willoughby for the record, I know the big project here is a judicial building and we will be bringing back a separate board presentation just on that. We'll talk about financing and Mr. McCullough will have a chance to give an update, but with the most current information. But I'll give it over to Jenny for what we have today. And we do have money already for the land purchase that will, is expected to happen this fiscal year. So that money has already been budgeted and allocated and is sufficient.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the Judicial Law Enforcement Center Building is the only item in the County Construction Department for your review and approval today. So as CFO Willoughby mentioned, you would be approving the, the project and its concept with details to be flushed out later and a more detailed presentation coming.
And it's anticipated, if I'm not mistaken, that all of this would be debt incurred. So Commissioners, any questions in this regard? Okay, then we'll go to public comment. Is there any public comment regards to this item? Seeing no public comment, do we have, in chambers, do we have any public comment online? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, thank you, we'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that we approve the county construction projects as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to approve the county construction portion of the CIP. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, and now to the Douglas County Water Utility.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, we have six Douglas County Water Utility projects for your approval. The Douglas County Water Utility is an enterprise fund, so it is supported by user fees. These six projects would be funded by the capital reserves in that fund. So the fiscal year 2223 portion for your approval today would be the $2,115,000.
So I want to make sure that this is clear. So these are restricted funds and, and it's not coming out of the general fund. And it's enterprise funds, right? And so that's where it's coming from.
Terry, that's absolutely correct. That's the water rates that people pay in. They have a cap, approved rate study that included a capital, capital program and this is merely following that program.
And we have the funding available?
Terry Willoughby, yes, there is funding.
Okay, very good. That's nice to hear. So Commissioners, Mr. Ingles?
Carson, Valley Well, which well is this, do you know?
Jenny will pull up the diagram submitted. Do we have? Should be in the description, location description, in the packet. Each project has a packet, has a page that describes the project. So should, the location description is west valley area. Let me read it.
It says the locations to be down.
Oh, so I think the location, exact location is part of the, the project, but it would be in the west side.
Chairman?
Commissioner Noah Satt?
Did you say this is, this is in packet page?
Jenny Cartwright, yes, this is page 52 that you can see on the screen right now.
Further questions, Commissioners? Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll go to chambers. Any public comment in regards to this item here in chambers? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, you're going to wear a, wear out the rug today, aren't you?
Maybe a little bit. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Very good. Bring that item back to the board then. Any questions or motions?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the Douglas County Water Utility as shown in the handout.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Noah Satt, seconded by Commissioner Rice to approve the Douglas County Water Utility area of the CIPs to the tune of $2,115,000. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay. Now we'll move to the library.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, we have three projects for your consideration today for the library. The library is a special revenue fund, but as we've covered during the budget presentation, there is a transfer from the general fund to support that program. The two projects noted for the interior painting and the bathroom upgrade, we have considered that there might be some funding remaining at the end of fiscal year 22 that we could allocate to these projects during FY '23, depending on how the final revenue turns out for the PALS sales tax. And then the third project for the reorganization and expansion is currently unfunded.
So it's my observation that we currently do not have a library director. And so my concerns are that I would prefer to not allocate the $335,000 this year to the reorganization until such time as we have a possible library director. And the library director could come back to us at a later time to determine whether or not that's appropriate. But that's just my observation. I'd like to hear from the other Commissioners.
Excuse me, Terry Willoughby, Terry Willoughby for the record, one thing we did last year was approve the projects. So you could certainly approve any projects and then we would come back if funding became available. Right now, that funding would have to come from the general fund because they're, all three are unfunded. So we could, we would just bring, if funding became available, we'd bring that back to the board for approval.
I see that now, so.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, then even the two that, that could be coming from PALS may come from the general fund if there isn't enough money from PALS, is that what you're saying?
We would, Terry Willoughby for the record, we would come back to you to fund those projects with, if there's additional funding in PALS, we would still need to bring it back to increase the budget or for approval for an increased transfer from the general fund.
May I? Ms. Willoughby, so as I'm understanding what, if I understand correctly, what you're saying is that by approving these projects, we are not tying our hands that they will be coming before us again for actual funding, is that correct?
Terry Willoughby for the record, correct. Part of the reason for that is we have a budget policy that does not allow for new capital projects to be funded from adjusted opening fund balance. They're supposed to bring new projects as part of this process, not jump in mid-year. So if we approve the projects, the project's been approved, then they're not new and allows them to use adjusted opening fund balance.
Thank you.
I appreciate that explanation, so, okay. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Then we'll go to public comment on this. Are there any public comments on section, the library section of the CIPs? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you, we'll bring it back to the board. Any other comments or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the library projects L1 through L3.
Okay. Okay, so motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Ingles to approve. I think he beat him, beat you to it, Danny. So Commissioner Ingles seconded it, so seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Thank you. And once again, I appreciate the, the information on that. Next section is the North Valley Sewer System. This is a, this is a county-owned project, is that correct?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, this is the county's sewer system, yes. It is an enterprise fund. There are seven projects presented for your review and approval today, all funded entirely by capital reserves, similar to the Water Utility Fund. Again, this is funded by user fees and similar to the Utility Fund, has a rate study and has a built-in component for capital projects.
Commissioners, questions? Okay, Commissioner Ingles?
Has there been any discussion in regard to the new sewer plant being capable of taking septic tank discharge? Has anybody talked about that? And what it would take to upgrade, they can't do it right now.
Terry Willoughby, that for the record, we will have, get with Phil Ricker and Public Works and make sure that that question's answered.
Mr. Cates, you had a.
Just to add, I have had that discussion with Phil. The only sewer treatment plant in the area is the large sewage treatment plant in Sparks that takes septic, yeah, septic effluent. He was going to look into that and see what was involved. It's a, it's an additional investment we'd have to make. We're not totally clear what that looks like, but, but it is on the radar. And as they get the current plant up and running, that'll be something they'll be looking at.
Of course, we'd need to look at the return on investment of that, right? I'm sorry. Yeah, is he, is he available online?
Rick, are you available to answer this question?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, Commissioner, this is Rick Robillard, Deputy Director, Public Works. I'd like to address that question to Commissioner Ingles. The wastewater, North Valley wastewater treatment plant had, was designed to accept additional EDUs. So sewer-to-septic conversions, it can, it'll be able to handle sewer-to-septic conversions. Patrick's point is that we don't accept septic pumpouts. So if someone was wanting to clean their septic, our plant does not regulated to be able to accept that currently. But we do have the capacity to do sewer-to-septic conversions. Does that answer your question?
I don't think so really, Mr. Robillard, but I still have remaining questions then. So, so individuals that use a septic service such as Summit Septic or Bobla's, do those, do those trucks have the ability to take that septic to our North Valley Treatment Plant or not?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Miss, Commissioner Noah Satt?
The question I have is what is the difference between normal sewage out of your toilet and difference between that and a septic, and a tank?
I can address that, Commissioner. When we talk about concentrations of septic, we talk about what's called BOD. BOD is the biological oxygen demand. So that when you have a high concentration of septic, the plant doesn't have the ability to process that high concentration of septic. It can actually kill the biological bugs. And so that's, that's the reason why we can't accept that as well. It's also, we're not permitted to accept that to the state.
So for layman's terms, Mr. Robillard, I'm assuming that, so those of us who are on septic, that's a very concentrated effluent. And those discharges coming off of individual homes are a much lighter process. And, and that's why the North Valley system is designed to accept those lighter discharges versus the concentrated septic that would be in a, in an individual home concentrated septic tank. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Noah, Commissioner Noah Satt?
One more question. If we have biology involved in home discharge, wouldn't that same biology be in a septic tank?
It is the same, there is aerobic and anaerobic bacteria that work for you in your, your septic tank as well as the treatment plant. You're just talking about, you have to process the volume in a much quicker way with a treatment facility than you can to let it sit. And you're also talking about, you know, much larger volumes. So, you know, we take in 300,000 to 400,000 gallons per day of effluent into the North Valley plant, so.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Seeing none, Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, bring it back to the board. What are your desires? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, since I've been on the Douglas County Sewer Authority up at the lake for five years, I guess I'm an expert in this. So I will make the motion that we approve the North Valley Sewer System projects as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, who's an expert in this area. Seconded by Commissioner Noah Satt, who's a novice as I am. I don't want to be, I know I'm not supposed to make. I don't want to be, I know I'm not supposed to make those comments, am I, Mr. Ritchie? But anyways, we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the North Valley Sewer System upgrades. Any, sensing no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Thank you.
Chairman, I might add that Commissioner Rice knows his stuff.
I'm glad we can add some levity to these meetings. Okay. Moving right along to other Public Works, no pun intended. Okay, Public Works Building Services, that's the next item. Thank you.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the next department of Public Works has four projects for your consideration. I will note that the Public Works Building Services Department is within the general fund. These projects are currently unfunded and similar to the library and other unfunded projects, they're here for your approval pending determination of funding at a future date.
I like that comment, pending funding. So, questions from the commissioners? Okay. Public comment? Are there any public comments on the Public Works portion of the CIP projects? Sensing none in chambers, do we have any public comment online? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Coming back to the board, once again, the only ones that are really designated for 2022, '23 are the countywide ADA assessment and the animal service, services camera upgrade, pending the ability to fund. Bring it back to the board, any further questions? Sensing none, do I have a motion to approve this section of the capital improvement program?
I'll make a motion to approve the public, the funding for the Public Works, PW1 through PW4. Actually, we've only proven, are we only approving 22, '23?
Yep. Okay.
Well, Terry Willoughby for the record, you're approving the plan and, but the funding would be the only thing rolled into the budget, of which there is none, so, there you go.
All right, so I'll approve the plan for Public Works Building Service.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tarkanian. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rice. Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes five to zero to approve the Public Works section of the CIPs. And now for regional transportation. That's a big item, so, Ms. Cartwright or Ms. Willoughby?
Terry Willoughby for the record. So this project, the, a little update on the project status, we have submitted the RACE grant, RACE grant, which was the new build grant. That has been submitted within the last one to two weeks, so we will hear if that's successful later on in the fall. The project is currently funded for the two-lane project, which is our commitment. We do have the funding available in the Regional Transportation Fund for that. However, we will have to address this if we are successful at the grant to receive the four-lane, and I don't know if Mr. Cates wants to add anything to that.
For the record, Patrick Cates, so this would be the third year that we've applied for what, what they're now calling the RACE grant. That's to ask for federal funding to build four lanes and multimodal and all of that. They're very competitive grants, so I don't know what our chances are going to be. We increased in ranking last time. They've changed some of the criteria for RACE, I'm not sure, but we wanted to keep that ball rolling. But in absence of that, as Ms. Willoughby indicated, we have the funding available to complete the two lanes that we're obligated to under the Park Ranch Agreement.
So you're saying we have the funding, $9,691,774 to build our legal obligation under the park development agreement from Toller to just past, or up north of Buckeye Road, without going into debt? Is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, that is correct. We have, the general fund has made several contributions to Regional Transportation Fund over the years and that money, the Regional Transportation Committee has identified Mueller as the high, number one priority project for that fund, and so we have set aside funding for that. It is available in the fund balance to complete that. This project that you're seeing, we wanted to get a project on our CIP for the four-lane because it looks better for the grant application. We want, so you will have both options.
Okay. This funding does not cure the issues of the bookends, so to speak, the north and the south connections. But once again, this is funded, so this would meet our legal obligation of the park development agreement. Is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, that is correct.
Okay.
We will deal with the bookends later.
Okay. And once this is approved, what is the, what is the timeline on actual breaking of ground then?
Terry Willoughby, I will have John update you with that information. Project is, sorry, Jeremy's coming, sorry.
Jeremy's pitching today.
Jeremy, who will answer those project questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchins.
Yep, Jeremy Hutchins, I'm your county engineer. So, yeah, they're working close to 60% design. They've got to work through a colmar and some environmental stuff through the end of the year and they're, we just talked with, I saw Scott McCollough here earlier, but we were talking about a breaking ground next, about a year from now, next spring. So things are looking, looking good schedule-wise. Any other questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Ingles?
I don't know why we're building a road for a developer, but it's already been done. Hasn't $1 million been expended for engineering studies already?
The design, I believe, has been spent, I believe the construction bid should be, it should go out to bid for construction in the fall, so you'll be able to, you'll, that'll come back to you for approval.
There has been $1 million roughly.
I don't know the exact figure, sir. I would have to get that information for you.
But something has been expended for engineering?
As Jeremy stated, it's at 60% design, so yes.
Thank you.
Last year, Mr. Ingles, last year we approved, I think it was January, February, a transfer of some money, I think it was close to $1 million for the engineering or design work for the, for, so you're correct.
Terry Willoughby for the record, it was 1.1 million of general fund money that was transferred over to the RTC fund.
Right, okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Noah Sad?
Looking at item RTC2, Regional Transportation, it says at the far right-hand column, RDA. Those are almost fighting words.
Terry Willoughby, that's RDA1, that's leftover money. This project is an old project that's still around. There are some right-of-way issues with this, so that's why it hasn't been, it's the last thing that will be done in RDA1.
Thank you, ma'am.
And as I understand it, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Noah Sad. So Vista Grande, that's the extension that basically is behind the north Walmart and extends behind the Walmart Shopping Center, the other shopping center, all the way to Jack's Valley Road. And you're indicating that we have a remaining $2,352,000 to do that out of the RDA1 funds that are designated only for that area. Is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, yes. This project was approved on a capital improvement plan many years ago as a use of RDA1, and the reason the RDA1 fund is still open and existing is because this project has not been completed.
The, the Johnson Lane reconstruction, that's a grant, correct? But the Mossville and Pine Net and Kemmerlin reconstruction, those are all unfunded in the future years, with possible, later on.
Terry Willoughby addressing those, as we may recall, there's going to be significant infrastructure money coming through, through the new infrastructure bill that will funnel, be funneled through the state, so we want to be ready to grab that money when it's available.
Very good. Other questions, commissioners? Sensing none, we'll go to public comment here in chambers. Sensing no public comment here in chambers, Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the board for any additional questions or motion. Mr. Commissioner Ingles?
Okay, I'll approve this under duress because this Mueller Parkway is, the primary beneficiary is park development, 2,500 home, additional homes, and whoever else is going to be out there developing. We can't forget that.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Regional Transportation Plan, RTC1 through RTC6 in its entirety.
Motion by Commissioner Rice. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian. Sensing no further discussion, all those in figure signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero to approve RTC1 through RTC6 of the regional transportation total, $9,691,774. Thank you. Okay. Now we have the room tax areas. This is the really long one. And, Jesus, is this, is this the one that includes the pickleball? Okay.
I want to see, I want to see you deny that one.
I would caution you, I would caution you commissioners, you know, this room was very full a couple of hours ago, or an hour ago, so anyways, Ms. Cartwright?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, there are 25 capital improvement projects in the room tax fund for your consideration. Room tax is a special revenue fund, so it is, it receives its own sources of revenue outside of the general fund, primarily obviously from room taxes that are collected within the county. And yes, you were correct, the pickleball project is within this. There is a combination of funding noted. Some are funded from room tax reserves, others from the residential construction tax, which is collected from new developments, and then others are unfunded or grant-funded and will be brought back for consideration as those funding sources are realized.
So in regards to the residential construction tax, I know that there's members of our community that, I'm not exactly sure of how these funds are spent, but as I understand it, every time a home is built here in Douglas County, there is a, a $1,000 that is collected from that, from that particular home that's built that has to be spent in that particular area. Am I praising that correctly?
Terry Willoughby for the record, I'm not sure of the actual amount, but the philosophy is correct and it is accounted for in each area. It's segregated with our, within our accounting system and they spend according to what that area has available.
I think our community services manager, Scott Morgan, has information on this.
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director for Douglas County, Mr. Chair and members of the board. The RCT, or Residential Construction Tax for Parks, is a $1,000 mitigation fee assessed on new home constructions, up to $600 for a mobile home or pre-manufactured homes. There's a cap on that particular type of housing and there is a timeframe that is required to be committed or spent. In generally, it's three years after a home has been constructed, we have to spend those funds, so we do try to, to spend those monies rather than return them. And, and there are some nuances as well as, if it's a subdivision, the three-year clock doesn't begin to tick until such time as 75% of a subdivision has been completed. So we monitor those closely and in general, we just try to spend them as they are collected so we're not in a situation where we are in a refund position.
So, Mr. Morgan, so what you said in that regard is if we don't spend it in that particular area, the refund has to go back to the builder of the home or the actual resident of the home?
They go back to the resident of the home since theoretically they have been paid for as part of their purchase price. We refund the actual homeowner that is occupying the home based on their request for a refund.
Right.
There are also four collection areas in Douglas County where these funds are stored, one in the Tahoe Basin, one in north county, one in central, and then one in south county.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Commissioner Ingles?
The Douglas Cultural Performing Arts Center, could you elaborate on what that entails?
Yes, and just to give you a little, Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, our CIP is, is a product of a lot of public input, starting with our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and also including the Douglas County Senior Services and DART Public Transit Advisory Board. So we take a lot of input and some of the input that we have received through these advisory boards is to start looking at what it would take to construct and operate a cultural performing arts facility in Douglas County. And so that was a product of public input received and prioritized by these advisory boards to do a feasibility study and assess the need for such a facility in Douglas County. And so that's where that particular comment is weighed in, in a future unfunded project in our CIP.
So we'll have a performing arts center at the lake and one down here.
I believe that this particular feasibility is to see if there is a need or a desire to have one in the Carson Valley. It does, I don't believe it is set up to assess the need for a performing arts center at the lake since we already are having one.
Now, all these projects are going to require maintenance, correct? And do we have any kind of an idea how much it's going to cost to have staff and supplies to maintain all of these?
And Terry Willoughby for the record, in each project sheet, that's actually part of the submission. If you look at the project, if you can, well, we ask them now to identify future operating costs.
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, yes, that is correct. We do assess that with respect to the Culture Performing Arts Center, a very high level of discussion. It, it is right now, if it were to be constructed today, probably not operated by Douglas County staff. We would enter into some type of MOU at the time with the Carson Valley Arts Association or Arts Council to be the operator of that facility in Douglas County, would just own the structure and then do it under MOU, very much like how we operate the Dankburg Home Ranch, which costs Douglas County very, very little because it's operated by a nonprofit and operated very, very well. I want to point out that there is, under the pickleball, you're seeing the column, there's $240,000 maintenance annual operating costs for a total of $80,000. That is probably a typographical error. We did put in our plan that after, in five years, we would probably do what's called a crack and color on the pickleball complex. That is not an every year cost. It's probably more to the extent of $2,000 or $3,000 just to blow and clean the facility and pick up trash, but we did want to point out that every five years, we will probably do a $40,000 color coat and crack repair on the facility, very much like we do our tennis courts, which is part of our annual major maintenance and repair in our operating budget.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Noah Sad?
I'm referring to CS6, Rancho's Aspen Park Splash Pad. Tell me what a splash pad is, please.
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, you're asking what a splash pad is?
I am.
It is a above-ground water element, very similar to what is in Minden Town Park, the square park, where basically it's a pad where water- the Square Park, where basically it's a pad where water squirts out of the ground. They also have elements where buckets drop on your head and you can squirt people. They have guns in there that water cannons, but it's a above-ground water play park. Doesn't require a lifeguard. The water is recirculated, and it was identified to do something substantial as a water element in the Gardnerville Ranches.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Morgan.
I can attest through my kids, they loved him.
So could we employ Mr. Noah Sad to stand out there with a water hose and do this? Or? Okay. Mr. Morgan, thank you. Questions on this, where, where there's, on the funding sources where the grants are indicated, are those grants anticipated, or are they actually grants that have been awarded?
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, they have not been awarded. They are anticipated. We know that there are sources available, and obviously the project would not go forward unless we have secured those funding sources.
Thank you. Any additional questions, commissioners? Mr. Commissioner Rice?
I have no questions, but I would like to comment that this is all funded by TOT, and this is putting money from our visitors back into our community. And I see all of this as a, a quality of life issues in, in here, and I'm, I'm delighted to see so many projects to benefit our citizens.
Good observation. Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. We'll now ask for public comment in chambers. And we have Mr. Fitzgerald from our Carson Valley Arts Council.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Brian Fitzgerald. I'm the president of the Carson Valley Arts Council. Since it was brought up, I just wanted to clarify a little bit of the feasibility study that's being requested in the CIP for Performing Arts Center. I think the concept is something to take beyond what we currently have, which are just town halls. Town halls, which serve the community quite well, but it's not designed for theater or dance. And so we're not looking at something with this feasibility study that would match what is being constructed up at State Line. It's something that would be beyond a town hall, mid-sized, fixed-seat venue, ideally located in town or close to downtown Minden and Gardnerville. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, a question in that regard also, are we, are we looking to the private sector as well for possible funding if, if it's determined that this is a likely feasible thing for our county?
Absolutely. Again, Brian Fitzgerald, President, Carson Valley Arts Council, the, at this point, at this stage, this feasibility study is looking at the need. Does the need exist for such a facility in Minden and Gardnerville? Carson Valley Arts Council is, has been attempting to look at potential facilities within Minden and Gardnerville. We currently own the old Copeland Lumber Building. We're not saying that this feasibility study is going to direct us at that building, but certainly would be part of the consideration. If ultimately the feasibility study shows that the need exists, there would more than likely be a nonprofit slash public slash private partnership to actually see this project through.
Thank you. Further public comment?
James McCallum for the record, I'm just happy to see Rancho's listed, and splash pads, they sure benefit our families. We have a lot of young families, people just starting out, and I'm sure they're going to appreciate the splash pad. So thanks for that consideration.
Thank you. Any additional public comment here in chambers? Since we see none, Ms. Johnson? Oh, wait, well, we're in public comment just yet, so I'll get back to you. Ms. Johnson, do we have any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay. Ms. Commissioner Ingles.
I'm waiting to see Mr. McCallum in his speedos out there in that splash pad.
Okay, well then, if, if that's the case, if we, then I'm, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that. Honestly, I'm not sure his wife is either, by the way. So anyways, bringing it back to the board, is there any further questions from the board on this? Since we see no further questions from the board, entertain a motion.
Well, since nobody else is going to jump in, and this is our, one of our largest ones, I move that we approve the CIP program for all of the, all of the subjects from CS one through CS 25 coming out of the room tax.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to approve $1.995 out of the room tax fund for items CS one through CS 25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero, and we'll move on to the stormwater section.
Jenny Cartwright for the record, the final department with a CIP for your consideration is the Stormwater Division. This is a special revenue fund. It does have some supplemental support from the general fund. However, the project that is being submitted is intended to be partially grant-funded and partially funded from existing reserves in the Stormwater Fund.
As I understand it, is this part of the lawsuit that was brought that, that we are required to, to build these detention basins? Is that?
Jenny Cartwright for the record, part of the funding is from that settlement fund.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions? Okay, very good. We'll go to the public comment. Is there any public comment here in chambers? Since we see no public comment in chambers, Ms. Johnson, do we have public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. At this time, there's no public comment online.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the board for a motion or additional questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the funding for the Stormwater ST one, I guess just ST one.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the Stormwater total of $280,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that passes five to zero, and as I understand it, I don't have a page behind this, that concludes our capital improvement projects for 2022, '23, if I'm not mistaken. So at this time, I would, before we go into a main motion to a pass as approved already, I will ask for public comment here in chambers. If there's any public comment here in chambers? Since we see none, Ms. Johnson, is there any final public comment on the capital improvement project budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. I do have someone with their hand raised indicating they would like to provide public comment. Jason, is your public comment in regards to the CIP items that we just spoke about?
Good morning. Yes, I think the public comment is pertinent. Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Douglas County. We're observing from a great distance here, and just wanted to commend you once again for the communication, the great amount of detail going into managing the county. We'd ask the, I'd like to ask the administrator to open up the comment chat section, please, of the live Zoom forum, so that folks who are tuning in can ask questions amongst themselves, talk to each other, clarify details, and, and get to know each other. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. I am being told that that is not available, so I appreciate your request, but I'm sorry, we can't accommodate that. So anyways, any other public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson for the record. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board. Any further comments from the commissioners? Then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Douglas County Community Improvement Projects Program for 2022, '23.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Noah Sad, seconded by Commissioner Rice. Since we see no further comments, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. There we go. Okay.
Terry Willby, thank you very much for your support, and just know that you should not see a capital project coming forward in the next year, that it was not on this plan. So hold us accountable to that.
At this time, it's... Okay, at this time, I would like to take a, what do we need? It's 10:36 by my clock. Can we take a break until a quarter to 11? Would that be sufficient? Okay, we'll go, okay, we'll go to, we'll go to 10 minutes before 11. Okay, so almost a 15-minute break. So, thank you.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Good morning. My clock is indicating that it's 10:51. So I'd like to bring the Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. We are now going into item number two, as approved in the agenda. This was originally itemized as item number one. All five commissioners are back from recess. So item number-- well, item number two, for possible action discussion to consider requests for funding from Douglas County's Allocation of American Rescue Plan Act, more commonly known as ARPA funds, with our CFO, Ms. Willoughby, and also Mr. Cates.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, these are-- at a previous meeting, the board-- we were directed me to utilize the revenue allowance, the standard allowance methodology, which allows us to use the Rescue Plan Act funds for general government services, as identified in the staff report. Today, we have gathered submissions from the public and departments, and we are bringing these to you for your consideration. The funds have to be committed by December 31, 2024, expended by December 31, 2026. So you absolutely don't have to make any decisions today. But we did owe it to the public and the people that submitted applications to bring these before you. We had a deadline of March. So we have gathered everything, vetted them, and brought these to you. These do not include items that were previously approved by the board or expended. We had some COVID mitigation that had to be done at China Spring, which was an allowable use of funds that has already been expended. And then the Sheriff's Department brought for your consideration, for use of funds, a scanner that they are using in the jail, which has a temperature component that helps to detect COVID and prevent. So with that, I would like-- I will share my screen.
So just so the commissioners understand-- if I might interrupt you, Ms. Willoughby. So the-- so we have until December 31, just for clarification processes. We have until December 31, 2024, to dedicate these funds. And then the expenditures need-- take place by December 31, 2025 or '26?
'26.
'26.
So the definition from the U.S. Treasury of committed is we would issue a purchase order or enter into a contract with another entity.
Okay.
So that's what they mean by committed.
And if I'm reading this spreadsheet correctly, we've already committed out of the four-- out of the $9,499,223, we've already committed $249,494, as you indicated, to the Sheriff's Department and China Springs.
Terry, that's correct.
Okay. And then-- and then also during the CIPs, we indicated a desire to spend of the ARPA funds, another $307,000 to-- for feasibility studies in the Community Development Department. Is that correct?
Terry, you approved the projects. However, it would-- you still need to approve--
It's dependent upon this.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So the plan here is to go through these items and have the commissioners ask questions. We will go to public comment, I suppose, on-- do we want to do it on each individual item or in total? In total. Okay. So we'll have public comment in total. Individual questions can be asked by commissioners on each item if they wish. And then-- so then-- and I-- so as I understand it, we can-- we can-- we have basically three options, as I understand it. I just want to clarify that. We can pass this in total, option number one. Option two would be to cherry pick items out of this to approve today. Item three would be-- or a combination thereof. Item three would be to table the entire discussion for further public comment, public outreach, and come back to us at a later date. Am I correct on those three options?
Terry Willoughby, that is correct. And I did want to mention that one of the criteria that we identified in soliciting the applications, submissions, was that these were to be one-time projects. We don't want to fund someone's operating budget out of one-time money, because then they won't be able to pay that next year. So-- and we had the same-- I believe Mr. Cates has a comment.
Okay. Commissioner Engels, you had a question?
Now, this is completely separate from the opioid settlement, correct?
Oh, yes, sir. There will be an item coming for you to segregate those funds. This is totally separate. This was related to COVID. It was signed into law by President Biden.
Okay. I think it's important also to make sure we put on the record-- we've had a lot of public comment in this regard, I'm sure to the-- I know I have. I had a lot of phone calls and emails regarding the expenditure of these funds, as I assure the other commissioners have as well. I want to let the public know it's important to understand that this board, because of added revised statutes and open meeting law, we are not allowed to see this any sooner than the public sees it. So we haven't really had a great deal of time any more than the public has to digest this. And it's a tremendous amount of information to try to digest in a short period of time. So I think it's important for the public to understand that, once again, this is the-- this is basically the first opportunity that the commissioners have had an opportunity to discuss these items. So please bear with us in that regard. So, thank you.
Terry, and I would like to point out that there is also-- there's a small balance left. The funding does allow for the county to recoup administrative expenses associated with the funds, of which we have many, as we learned from the CARES Act. Because for each item that we distribute, this is still federal money. We still have to follow federal procedures for procurement. And we have to make sure if we pass money through that they are-- that they are following those procedures. So contracts and everything will have to be-- they won't just get a check tomorrow, put it that way. We will have to do some outreach and contracts as well.
Okay. So while I appreciate your comment regarding federal funds, I want to remind the public that there's no such thing as federal funds. Federal fund-- the federal government is not a money-making entity. Every dollar that they so-called give back to us is money out of our residents', our citizens' pocketbooks. And I know that there's been some distaste actually expressed by members of the public and citizens of Douglas County that perhaps, you know, we're not spending our money. We're not spending our grandchildren's money. We're spending our grandchildren's grandchildren's money. So that needs to be understood. And we need to look at this in an extremely diligent manner. But it's been suggested that perhaps we deny this funding from the federal government and send it back. However, I would remind our residents that should we choose to do so, that funds then would be allocated to other counties and spent on their citizens. So anytime we can bring a dollar back into our community and spend it to the benefit of our residents, I'm certainly interested in doing that, keeping as much of that-- those funds at home as possible. Mr. Tarkanian, you had a comment?
Yeah, I would just disagree with what you said there. We are paying right now-- first of all, they do print their money. And they keep printing it and keep printing it. And we are paying for it now, because we're paying for it when we go to the Gulf Street store, we go to the gas station, and inflation. And for us to give back money that we're-- the rest of the country is using, when we're paying for it through the irresponsible spending in Washington, D.C. through inflation, it just wouldn't make any sense.
Okay. I stand corrected on that. But we're all-- I think we're all in a concurrence in regards to these funds.
Terry, if I could clarify, the funds are subject to the Federal Single Audit Act. So those procedures we have to follow.
Okay. Mr. Cates, you had some comments here before we get into this.
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just kind of broadly. There's a lot of projects here. There's a lot of tough choices for the board to make. As you stated, the board hasn't reviewed any of these projects until the public was-- until the package was posted. So you need some time to absorb that. We did try to make some recommendations based on our kind of preliminary review and attempt to help. I don't know if that helped or muddied the waters, but we were trying to help provide a little guidance. As Ms. Willoughby said, there is no rush with these monies. We have a few years to obligate them. So if you're not comfortable making any allocations today, that's totally understandable. The way I look at these funds, of course, the-- these have been brought into the county. They're no longer subject to the limitations of ARPA uses. So you have a difficult challenge in the variety of projects it could be used for. A couple of ways that I have looked at this and what our recommendations reflect is that there is a tremendous opportunity with some of the infrastructure bill money that has come to the state to fund a variety of projects, some of which I think could be-- are included under these ARPA requests. The difficulty there is timing. The state has five years to spend their infrastructure money. And they really haven't even set up any granting criteria yet. They've been talking. They've solicited people to submit for projects, but they really haven't set up a formal granting process for a lot of this. So a lot of that's unknown. There may be opportunities for some of this stuff to be federally funded. It may be wise to hold back on some of this funding and see how that plays out. One of the things that we try to do is add some items in here to be able to go after those monies in the future, such as the feasibility studies that we talked about under the CIP. We also have a request here for some grant writing resources. I think it's an opportunity to leverage these funds to go after-- more funds to go after for capital projects, because, you know, $9 million is a lot of money for us. But when you're doing capital projects, it doesn't go very far. And we'd quickly run out of money. So it was really an attempt to position us to be able to go after other money, to do some things that kind of makes sense. And another thing, as you look at these projects, you may want to ask some questions about how shovel-ready they are. Some of them are very shovel-ready. If they could just get a little bit more funding, they could go. Others are-- don't even have design yet. And, you know, that's where the feasibility studies come in. So keep in mind that timing as well and how far along a project is, how much other sources they've been able to cobble together as you review this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cates. Commissioner Tarkanian?
It would help me, as a commissioner in allocating these funds, if we knew which line items are possible-- possibilities of being federally funded through the infrastructure program.
Okay. I think we could ask that question as we go through each item. I do want to make an observation here. It's five after 11:00. And I don't know how long this item's going to take, but I don't like getting into the middle of an item and then breaking for lunch. So with the cooperation of the commissioners, we'll power through this. If it takes an hour, then that's good. If it takes an hour and a half, I certainly am interested in doing that as well, rather than taking a break in the middle of an item. So, okay. That's kind of my intentions. Okay, let's go. Okay, let's go. Ms. Willoughby.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, the first item is Carson Valley Arts Council. The Copeland Building, I believe, has a, is potential to be used as a performing arts venue, however, it has an irrigation ditch running through the middle of the building. And I believe we have a representative here if there's any questions on that project, or Mr. Cates could offer some. This would be a benefit to the community.
Questions on that? Mr. Commissioner Ingles?
How do we relate that to COVID?
As you recall from the meeting in February, because we are utilizing the lost revenue allocation, the items no longer have to be tied to COVID. I think that was February 7th meeting.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. We're just trying to find that in our, in our package here. That was listed as, I'm trying to, basically, that's the, okay, that's the special meeting for 426, not the CIPs.
That would be the supplemental.
That's the, that's, yes, the supplemental. One more. One more. Yes. Everybody else got that? Okay. So going back to Mr. Tarkanian's question, is this 69,500, is that possible funding out of the infrastructure funds through a grant process?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I doubt it. It's really, the infrastructure bill is going to be looking at big projects like roads, and this is really a private building that has an issue. That's owned by the Arts Council.
I'm sorry for the delay, but let's, let's make sure that all of the commissioners have access to this, so.
Terry Willoughby, if I could just expand on Commissioner Ingles' question. So the federal, the United States Treasury guidelines, if you're utilizing, they provided a opportunity to claim a standard allowance for lost revenue. They're basically determining that lost revenue during this certain period of time was due to COVID, during the COVID period, and that's where the basis for the allocation comes from. So if we lost revenue, then we're able to use it as general governmental services.
But as I understand it, Ms. Willoughby, these are two different programs, right? The CARES Act, okay, is completely separate and different from the ARPA.
Sorry, I misspoke. The Rescue Plan Act that we presented in, I believe, February, and where the board directed to use that allocation.
Okay. Now I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay. So we are recommending, the tentative recommendation from staff was to fund that item. The next item was China Spring Youth Camp. We did a calculation of lost revenue, however, that's already included in our last revenue allocation, so we are not recommending funding for that. It's already included as part of our county lost revenue. The next item is a joint submission between Community Development and the Assessors Department for a document scanner for $599,000, for almost 430, $599,000. And this will really allow them to move into the next phase of digitalizing documents. And the.
Question. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nozad, I'm going to, I'm going to allow commissioners to ask questions without having to get acknowledgement from me, as long as we don't trip on each other.
Having been a former employee of Xerox, I can never understand a scanner at $599,000. Is this a printer or is this a scanner?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, so all the applications are also in your packet. This was the description of the process. The company will scan, upload these files. It includes the trans, the transition from paper files to electronic, so it's a complete project. It's not just the equipment. Here's the breakdown. So it's really the scanning of the existing documents more than the scanner.
What page is that on, please?
Do we have the packet page? I don't have the packet up. Okay. So, and they are in the order that I'll be going over. I'm sort of want to start from there and follow along.
Mr. Chair, Tom Delair is on Zoom to answer any questions.
Any questions with Mr. Delair?
We're here.
Oh, we have our.
Hi, Shawnee Garen, for the record. I am currently the Administrative Services Manager for Porter's Office and oversee the operations in the Records Management Division as well. And I can provide a little bit of insight. I've worked with Tom Delair and Trent Tholen and on both of these sets of records. And ideally, the, the situation that we have is there's a combination of paper records that are large format, you've got blueprints and all that type of information, excuse me, that are stored both in the basement at the Mendon Inn and then out at our Records Management Warehouse. Community Development is currently in the process of implementing a new software program that will help tie together all of the records that they utilize and minimize some of the need for staff to repeatedly access one file jacket at a time and then scan on a one-off. So it's going to really centralize the digitization of the paper records, which will help us free up some much-needed space out at the warehouse. Likewise, for the assessors' records, these are large books, and when I say large, I mean large, heavy, ominous books that have records that are deemed permanent record by statute. And many of them are, they're very old, many of them are written in pencil. And so what we're finding is in addition to the books falling apart, the pencil degrades over time, and we're, there's a loss of the quality of the record. And so we looked at adding that, scanning of the unbound records into this project as well, rather than having multiple separate projects when we know it's the same vendor, the same process.
A question. Do we have hardware in place to do that scanning?
No. This project is meant to outsource that scanning. That's why it's $599,000.
Thank you.
Yes. It's, it's essentially a digitization project, not purchasing a scanner.
And Terry Willoughby, for the record, again, this is a one-time project, one-time money, so it's an appropriate use of grant funding.
Any further questions from commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Garen. I really appreciate you coming over, and it's nice having you just so adequately, so.
The next four projects are the Sheriff's Projects. One is for jail cameras at the Tahoe Jail. The next is a Bearcat vehicle. The third is JLEC court cameras. This would be a solution for the Constable's Office, which the Sheriff is taking over. And just a reminder that that part of JLEC is not going to go away during the remodel, it will still be there. And the last one is a UV Angels project, which is COVID-19 related.
Mr. Chair, you won't be able to answer this question, but when Sheriff Coverly was here, he had mentioned this was his wish list, and he didn't need all of them. It'd be nice if we knew what order priority he had. So if there was, was some money that needed to go in other projects, we would have something to compare it with.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, I can tell you from talking to the Sheriff's Department that both of the camera projects are needed, and I wouldn't, the cameras are almost inoperative, but not quite. So they're going out of service. They, they would be needed for security in both the court as well as the jail. And I can bring up the other two projects if you'd like to see them.
Through the package, I'm just saying, I'm, there's other projects that we've been approached as commissioners that are not on here, so we're just trying to see, you know, what do we need and what can we not do? Sheriff Coverly said this was his wish list, and he doesn't need them all, but would like them all. And I'm just trying to figure out which ones were his priorities. So talking to you, listening to you, it would be the camera, two camera systems are his top priorities.
I will confirm that with the Sheriff. Again, these are the only projects on this list that have been submitted to, as part of the process. The next project is for Mueller Parkway conduit and pole boxes. This is not part of the project's scope, but was considered to be needed. It will help, I believe this will help run the conduit to the school district. The conduit in the ground that, for the high-speed internet. The next item is also related to Mueller Parkway. NEPA is an assessment that's required to, for federal funding on any road project. So in preparation for the RACE grant, we would need to prepare a, have a NEPA assessment completed on that.
Ms. Willoughby, I'd like to go back to that conduit for the Mueller Parkway. You're indicating that that would facilitate connectivity to the, the schools. However, it's my understanding that the Martin Slough Trail that we approved is going to accommodate the interconnectivity of the, of the schools. So I, I see a little bit of a question mark here. So I know that our Community Development, Community Development Manager is here, so maybe Ms. Lisa Granahan can address that.
For the record, Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager. Thank you for the question. I submitted this as part of the work with our Broadband Action Team in talking to John Herb, our Transportation Engineering Manager. Due to costs, the conduit and pole boxes needed to be pulled out of the Mueller Parkway project. It's really a good rule of thumb, whenever you're building infrastructure projects, to go ahead and put that multi-duct conduit in. And that's exactly what we did with the Martin Slough Trail project. So by putting the conduit back into the funding of this project, what you would be doing is reducing future, having to go in and dig and put conduit in by about 75%. It would, there could be a potential benefit to the county with some of our future needs. I was speaking with our Chief Technology Officer, Daniel, about that yesterday. And then it will also allow internet service providers to come in and potentially provide fiber to the homes, high-speed internet to businesses out in that area that will be starting to go in as the Mueller Parkway goes in, and residents in that area. And if you take a step back for a moment and think about COVID and how much we really had to rely on broadband, all of us, on, on high-speed internet, to go to the doctor for many of our residents to do telehealth, and our students for digital learning or just to do their homework, and now we have all of these workers who want to work remote. It makes sense as we look to future projects within our county, to think about broadband, to think about high-speed internet and potentially fiber. I know so many of our businesses that come and they knock on our door, they want to know if they're going to be able to get fiber to their businesses. I probably gave you more than you wanted, but, you know, I'm learning a lot with the Broadband Action Team, so I thought I'd share.
So, so as I understand it, this is more intended for the long-term future development of both commercial and residential out to, between basically the Martin Slough Trail and, and out to Mueller. Is that?
Yes, it may have some benefit to existing, but for the most part, it would be for future.
I had a question for Ms. Willoughby, is can these, this line item, or even the one with the NEPA assessment, be allocated from whatever restricted funds of public works and Mueller Parkway money's coming from?
The funds for Mueller Parkway are allocated for the construction of the Mueller Parkway project as is.
I understand, that's, that's coming from certain, from its restricted funds.
They're in, yes, they're in the Regional Transportation Committee over, so that that committee has authority over how those funds are spent.
So my question is, can we, these funds for the conduit, it's not the actual pulling into the broadband, but it's allowing for future use of the broadband, and for the NEPA assessment, could that be used through those funds if, those restricted funds instead of having to take them out of their ARPA funds? I'm trying to figure out where we could use other funds from and not just use the general.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, those funds are not under the discretion of this board, they are under the discretion of the RTC Board, so I don't want to speak for them. We would have to have them modify their budget.
I'm on the RTC Board, and I just wanted to know if we could use those, if they were, if they would be considered part of the restricted funds, because I know there are certain requirements for them to do so.
I would have to review the requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Granahan. Thank you, Ms. Granahan. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm sorry, now we can go back to the NEPA.
So we are on the NEPA assessment. So that would allow us, you have to have the NEPA assessment done before the grant is awarded. And so we would need to fund that somewhere to, in order to prepare for the RACE grant.
If we don't get the RACE grant, then we lose a half million. Is that the risk we're taking?
We would know fairly, have a good idea. We would want to know if we have a good chance. They would probably rank that grant fairly soon and we, even though it wouldn't be awarded.
I didn't quite understand that. So what I'm saying is, my understanding is we need to spend the $500,000 to put us in place to make a solid application for the RACE grant. And then if we still get denied, because Mr. Case has said it's, it's very difficult, these funds to get.
We would have, so Terry Willoughby, for the record, there is many, many federal grants that will be available, which this NEPA assessment would be applicable to. So even though if we wouldn't get the RACE grant, we'd still have it in place in order to go over other grant monies for Muller.
And that would include the state ARPA funds and the federal infrastructure funds as well? Is that right? Okay.
There's many, there's other grant funds specifically for rural and other grants that would be applicable to Muller, that we would also be seeking, that would also require, a NEPA assessment is required for any federal transportation grant.
Thank you.
The next project that was submitted was a broadband, for funding for broadband throughout the county. It was requested for $600,000 and we are recommending funding for $200,000. Again, there will be, there's other pots of money for broadband that we can utilize through the state and there's additional federal money in the infrastructure bill. But the $200,000 would be a good match component. We could demonstrate matching funds.
So you're, you're okay to proceed as long as commissioners don't have questions?
The next project submitted was a broadband study. That's actually already been funded. It was only $2,800. The next was a submission by Economic Development Department for technology assistance and training for businesses. And we did not recommend funding. It is duplicative of existing state programs that are being funded. The next submission was by Finance, My Shop, for grant-writing professional services. I have one grants person. She's pretty busy right now assisting all the departments. What we're finding with a lot of these opportunities is departments and other agencies, like GIDs and everything, they don't have people on staff to be able to really go through and apply for grants. So we would like to utilize some professional services that would help us to allow the county to gather some of the, to compete for some of these grant monies that are going to be available.
Okay, I think that's, that's an important aspect to put on the, on the record. So we did provide a, or funding for a individual in the Finance Department to oversee the administration of grants, but not necessarily devote a lot of time to grant writing.
Correct.
This would, this would supplement that basically to assist not only our county, but I want to make sure that it's understood by our GIDs that they also have, will have access to this individual to help them look at potential grants or needed projects within their GIDs and help them prepare that grant for, and make sure it's, all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed and all the hoops that have to be jumped through are done in a proper manner so that they, their viability of getting that grant are improved. Is that, is that correct?
Terry Willoughby, that's correct. We're looking for professional services, not a staff position because we feel that this is going to be a limited opportunity. I don't want to add a body on an ongoing basis.
So I know we have one particular GID trustee here in the room. So I'm hoping Mr. McCallum heard, heard those words, right? So I know you have some tremendous projects that are needed to be done in the ranchos. And, and so I think it's important that we put that on the records. Thank you.
The next group of projects were projects that you heard during the CIP project. This is the funding for the community development projects, only the funding for the feasibility or design for the first year of those projects. There's no additional funding through ARPA.
I guess my one question is, because I've been involved with trying to get the trail on the ranches to the, the community centers. That's a state highway that they would be going through. So do we pay the feasibility to try to get them to move forward with, with doing this project? Or how does that work?
I will defer to Jeremy Hutchings, our county engineer, for those questions.
Yep, hello. Jeremy Hutchings, your county engineer. So yeah, it's a state highway. So one of the intents of the trail to make it a little bit more pleasant is to go a little bit further away from the highway onto some adjacent ranches, the Frickies. We're trying to coordinate with them on obtaining an easement to do just that. They actually have an easement today for the sewer line that runs down there. If you drive out there, you see the manhole is going along. So we think that'd be a good spot. So we're trying to work with them to coordinate most of that trail over there, a little bit further off the highway. But there will be some DOT coordination needed as well because we'll have to tie back in, you know, across the bridge and such. Does that, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
It sort of does, but so is this total cost, the $6 million, is that going to be what we're going to have to pay for? Or are we going to the state to pay for most of this?
The, the plan would be to do some of the feasibility studies and then leverage that with grant monies that DOT, the way we're funding the Martin Slu Trail, part of it is through the federal grant, through our DOT is our partner. So we'd be looking to do something similar. And my contact at DOT says they'll be coming out next February for another round of solicitation of grants. So that'd be the capital part of it that we'd look to get funding through. So right now we're talking about just the, the engineering on it and the feasibility.
I, I don't want to belabor this. I'm sorry, because I know this is going to get long. But my last question is, this is what, we're putting it either through our money, TOT, or grants, but does a state, I mean, I thought that most of this holdup and delay has been to get the state to agree to do this and get them to pay for most of it. Is that still the plan or has that changed?
That'd be the plan to try to get the state, but the state's really managing the, the federal fund. That grant is actually managed through the DOT. So, but yeah, that would be, it would be the same grant program, I'm hoping, as part of it, to fund the capital as the Martin Slu Trail one, with, through the state, through the feds.
So, so I have some questions in that regard. I mean, we're, we're looking to devote a half million dollars here to the feasibility. Is that purchase of right-of-way or, or just primarily the feasibility and the design element of this?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. So based on the conversation we had in the CIP discussion, $75,000 was for the feasibility study itself. The $509,000 was a feasibility, design and easement acquisition.
Okay. I mean, I'm looking at this and, and the ultimate price tag on this is $6 million, yet we're funding two lanes of Muller that are substantial longer stretch of highway for $9 million. So a highway that, or a road that's going to be used by a lot of residents versus a multimod- and I, and I don't have any problem and I understand the need. I just, you know, I question the, you know, I, I'm concerned about spending a half million dollars and then, and then not being able to come to fruition on, on the actual completion of the trail outside of, outside of county dollars. That's, I guess that's my chief concern there. I don't know that that was a question, but more of an observation, okay?
So I know that there is a, a large component of the infrastructure bill that is specifically called out for trails. So that's part of what's going to come through the state and that the DOT will be managing. And so we expect to have a minimal, we're hoping to have a minimal county contribution for this trail.
Our residents are constantly questioning, you know, the, the wise application of dedication of funds from us on studies that then never come to fruition, you know? So we can study issues all day long, but unless we can actually come to a conclusion and, and have something our residents can use, it's questionable whether or not we should be spending that money to begin with. But once again, that's an observation, not a question.
Mr. Chairman. So the $6 million, the construction cost estimate is a very preliminary estimate. Until we do some more design work, that, that, that number would be refined. I would point out that this route ends up crossing the Carson River. And I know there's a bridge involved in that and that is part of why the cost estimate is, is as it is. And NDOT had previously granted a grant to help with some of these expenses. And we couldn't come to terms about cost overruns. They wanted the county to fund cost overruns. And of course, with the bridge, that can be very costly. We're still working through that with NDOT. But I guess my point is, I feel very confident that if we proceed with this, that they will participate in funding the construction of this, much as they did with the Martin Slu Trail.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Hutchings, for your input.
The next four submissions were for East Fork Fire Protection District, Wildland Engine retrofit, ambulance and ambulance gurney, all of which were recommended for funding. The force was, was for lost revenue. However, they are ineligible for lost revenue. The county as the primary recipient is, we, we are the ones eligible for lost revenue.
So you weren't going to address the Pineut Creek, the Pineut Road, the Pineview Estates, Buckeye Creek or the Buckeye Road causeway that were all on the next, on this list?
I will do whatever the board wishes. There's, the dollar amounts were what were approved through the CIP, but this was the recommended. So we can certainly do whichever.
I just want to make sure that we're.
Whichever one, the board pleases.
Okay. So, so we talked, so you indicated the fire protection?
Correct.
So do we want to hear from, from East Fork Fire on this, gentlemen?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Carlini, Chief Carlini, would you like to address it? It's basically the three items, Wildland Engine retrofit, the ambulance and the ambulance gurney. Is that correct, Ms. Willoughby?
Thank you. For the record, Todd Carlini, District Chief, East Fork Fire District. We certainly appreciated the offer to apply for these funds. We also appreciate the fact that, you know, you need to be deliberate in, in how these are, are allocated. And with that, I think the difference with our three projects, they're all, all somewhat time-sensitive for us. In all three cases, we have estimates, quotes, contracts that are ready to go. They're time-sensitive in terms of what we're looking at here. The longer we wait, the more they're going to cost. And in particular, we're talking about the, the products of steel and aluminum and how they impact all three of these projects. The ambulance and also the, the Wildland Engine. Both of those are chassis-dependent in availability of chassis. We've had to take a leap of faith and actually try to put a hold on two chassis. So hopefully we can get in line in terms of when these products are able to be produced so we don't have additional delays. We, we easily have wheels rolling on our ambulances 22 out of 24 hours a day. So they, and we're covering 96% of this county. And I think everyone's very well aware of the geography that we have from South County to Carson Tahoe Hospital. And that's why I can say what I say in terms of the amount of time that we have wheels turning. It's not just a, you know, 10-minute response and then 10 minutes to a hospital. In some cases, it's three hours by the time we get there and come back. So we're putting a lot of miles on our ambulances. The cost of these ambulances, the last new ambulance, entire new ambulance that we bought, that unit was under $200,000. We're now well over that at $225,000. And the same, same stand goes with, with fire apparatus. And in regards to that, we happen to have a chassis that's like new, very low mileage, that we can send out and have a new fire body put on it. The new fire body that I'm talking about is specific to Wildland Urban Interface firefighting. This unit would be assigned to the southern portion of Douglas County, where right now we are in a vehicle that belongs to the state of Nevada that they are on loan test. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a matter of timing for us. I know there's, there's, there's times here where you can go into 2024 and, and have, I think it'll be 2026 to spend some of these funds. But in our case, you know, the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. And our needs are, are really right now for, for these items. The other item that we're looking at is a replacement of all our ambulance gurneys. You would think that they would be something that would come with the ambulance, but they don't. These gurneys are very sophisticated gurneys. They've taken advantage of battery technology and they're all automated. So we're not having, like in my day, where we actually had to lift the gurney, it automatically lifts. It goes into a device that automatically lifts it into the back of the ambulance. So you're saving on, you know, the potential for back injuries. Back injuries are a huge cost in terms of, of the worker's compensation issues for that. You know, we're hoping that, you know, you're able to exercise one of your options that the, I think that, that the chair was pointed out today in terms of being able to maybe pick some of these items off the list and, and hopefully allow them to move forward. I know that, you know, there's, there, the COVID connection doesn't have to be as strong, I guess, now as in terms of how this money came in and, and it's in, in the county's general fund. But, you know, East Fork was the tip of the spear throughout most of COVID. Every single day, our folks were out there. You know, like Sheriff Coverly so eloquently discussed the, the value and the most important resource, and that is our people. And we're no different in terms of wanting to be able to do what we can for our folks, certainly in being able to retain our personnel. So, you know, for us, some of the funding that we have, we have to move it around into that category. As a special district, we have two funds. We have a general fund and an emergency fund. That's it. That's what the law provides. We're somewhat limited in terms of the revenue generation capacity of the district. We don't have some of those other revenue generating opportunities that, that the county may have. So our funds are pretty tight. We have to move those funds around to where it serves the, the immediate need in some instances. So when we have an opportunity like this, you know, we're going to take advantage of it and, and throw our applications out there. We know these are all one-shot expenses. These are not, there's nothing here that, that sustains anything other than it gets us down the road a ways in terms of, you know, the next time we have to replace an ambulance. And so that's why, you know, for all three of these, or a fire truck, or these gurneys, that's why it's important for us to, you know, hopefully that be something you could consider today.
Thank you, Chief. I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Chief. I have a couple of questions, and I'll be right to you.
Just real quick.
Okay.
How many gurneys do we get for 152K?
I'm sorry?
How many gurneys do we get for 152,000?
Yeah, hold on to your seat. We would get five. So they're, and the lift system. So they're about $20,000 apiece.
Actually, that was one of my questions, so that's good. Okay, so you must be reading my notes over here. Very good eyesight. And I guess my other question is, how many ambulances do we currently have, and how are they positioned throughout our county?
Currently, we have four frontline ambulances. We have two at Station 7, which is in the Gardner Ville Ranches. We have one in here in Mindon, and then we have one up in North County at Station 12.
So where would you anticipate?
And one reserve.
And where would you anticipate placing this other one?
I'm sorry?
Where would you anticipate placing this other one?
The one that would be replaced would be the ambulance that currently is Station 12. It's the one that has over 200 and some thousand miles on it.
So you're looking at replacement, not in addition to?
Where it would be a replacement and then having one in reserve, correct?
Okay, because I've been asked a lot from South County of where their ambulance is. And so we don't have one currently positioned in the South County area?
That is correct.
Would the option be to, should we look at this, and you're talking about replacement, would the opportunity possibly be to, rather than replace, to complement your staff and or your gear and place one in South County? I guess is my question.
You know, it could be in terms of maybe where we would, might keep the reserve unit, but the challenge we have there is the staffing of that ambulance. Currently, what we do in South County, we have a paramedic engine company that's there. And so advanced life support is immediately available in South County, and with the ambulance generally coming from Station 7, which is in the ranches.
Okay, I just, I guess our residents down there are concerned about the length of time to respond to a critical issue.
Right.
And so that's something I've got to certainly concentrate on. So, okay.
You know, we appreciate that, and we've been party to some of that same communications over the years that we went to the current system. But I think what's important to note with the services we provide, it's the advanced life support component that actually saves the life. The ambulance is certainly important, but being able to provide the advanced life support is what we have found to be the definitive factor in terms of survivability of an incident.
I don't know if you have the answer to this, but how many ambulances, do you know how many ambulances we have in the Tahoe-Douglas Fire District?
I believe Tahoe-Douglas supports two ambulances on a daily basis, and I believe that they probably have at least two in reserve.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And you can proceed.
And just to note that under the previous, the CARES Act money, which is done, that East Fork did receive over, a little over a million dollars from, in CARES Act funding.
I'm sorry, did you have additional information you wanted to deliver to us?
Is he talking to me? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Is there additional information beyond what Chief Carlini had to say?
Oh, Kevin May. I'm a firefighter with East Fork. I'm also the union president. East Fork professional firefighters. I just wanted to say that, you know, we, as speaking on behalf of the actual firefighters, I'd like to reiterate what Chief Carlini said. We understand that you guys have to be very diligent with this. There's a lot of requests and very limited funds. The guys that I represent spent a lot of time.
So the problem here is that we're not into public comment yet on all these items.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we were just asking informational information right now. We will go into public comment, at which time we'll entertain your comments, okay?
My apologies.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So, Ms. Willoughby, you can proceed to the next item.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby.
We will bring you back, okay?
No worries, I appreciate it.
The next item is mine, my request, for an update of our county's ERP Enterprise Resource System. It was purchased probably in 2016, the existing system. We're being told to do the things I think it needs to do to run efficiently, that we would basically have to reinstall the existing software, redo all the security settings in order to proceed and get some of the information out that I feel we need. We have a lot of people using shadow, what I call shadow systems out in the county, where they're doing billing outside of our system. We should, I don't want to make them transition to our system, but we should be able to interface into our system so that I could tell at a glance what my accounts receivable for the whole county is. I can't do that with this system without doing the whole thing. In addition, Tyler Technologies, who's the owner of the software, New World Systems, it's not being sold any longer, and they are already talking about transitioning us to a new product. So rather than just go to a new product, project, product, I want to do an assessment of the county's needs and do an RFP for a new system, make sure that we have something that fits the county's needs, go out and talk to departments. How are they doing things now? What are they doing manually, and how can we automate things? So this would be the start of that project.
So as I understand it, we bought the New World System back in 2016, and we're already out of date and unavailable to really do anything with that system. Is that correct? How long do you expect this system, then, to exist for us or be functional?
Well, technology is always changing, so I can't really say that. I would say we want to need to go through a thorough assessment of needs before we select any system. And of course, that selection would come back before the board for approval.
So this is just a study of the system, or is it actually a purchase of the system?
This would probably be part of the purchase, too.
Okay. Mr. Engels, you usually have questions in this area. Do you have any?
This is a constant nightmare that any financial department has to contend with. So it's pay me now or pay me later.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cates.
To your comment about how long the next system would last, again, we don't know that yet, but I will say, having worked on the ERP project for the state, that all the software is going towards software as a service, where you pay a subscription fee. And although that has increased operating costs, the benefit of that is your product doesn't become obsolete. They continue to evolve it and change it. Whereas, you know, it's kind of like our Office 365 model. Once we go to that, yeah, we do pay fees for that ongoing, but every time they come up with an update, it's going to be in that same product. Whereas, if you just buy the old software and install it on your servers, it can be obsolete, and you have, you know, several generations behind, and then you have to pay for a big conversion. So I assume that going forward with our ERP, that's probably where we'll end up at, so that obsolescence becomes not a factor in going forward.
Mr. Chairman, just a.
Commissioner, say.
In the early 70s, a book came out called Future Shock, and it discussed software development, and how long will that software be around? At the time the book was written, it was about five years. Two years later, it became two and a half years. And beyond that, it can be tomorrow. So you're going to have to put up with immediate change, because there's people out there who are, who think they know more than the people who use the software. That change should be made.
And Terry Willoughby for the record, part of this would be bringing someone in that's independent from the software vendor to make the assessment and guide us through the RFP process. So they will have no ties to any software company. They would be able to offer an independent analysis. And it's not just the finance department's software, it's the county's, and we need to get the whole county on board this time.
You are a proponent of software development lifecycle.
Okay, next item, I guess?
The next two were submitted by Gardner Ville Ranches GID grid. One is for the water distribution pipe and the water mains, and the second was for the emergency inner tie. We had originally identified these as possible, that would be possibly funded from the infrastructure bill projects, and of course, we would offer support to help them apply for that.
I got a question from Mr. Cates. When we had spoken after the last meeting, you had said that the Carson Subwater Conservatory District and the Gardner Ville Water Company was not in favor of participating in this?
For the record, Patrick Cates, I don't recall saying that exactly. My understanding, there's only been some preliminary conversations with Mindon Gardner Ville Sanitation District for the inner tie. I don't believe they've adopted any resolutions supporting this, or they've had some preliminary conversations. This is in a pretty early stage. There isn't any design work done. I don't recall the Carson Subconservancy District weighing in on this, to my recollection.
So, all right. Well, we spoke before, because this is an issue that's in my district, and is very passionate to people in my district. You had said that the two water companies were not willing to participate with the ranches, which would make it very difficult to do if they didn't. And now you're saying that that's not the case, that they just haven't done preliminary studies yet to determine if they want to. I'm trying to get what your intent with what you told me was, and please.
For the record, Patrick Cates, so the Carson Subconservancy District, I don't think has any direct tie to these projects. They don't run water systems. The Mindon-Gardner Ville Sanitation District.
Say, the Carson Water Sub.
Subconservancy District?
District does run water, correct?
They don't run water utilities.
Okay, they would not be involved in this interconnect, is that what you're saying?
No. I know, speaking with Ed James in the past, he's made a comment that an inner tie makes sense, but I don't, I'm not aware of any particular involvement in this. In terms of Mindon-Gardner Ville Water, my understanding is they, I understand there have been some preliminary conversations. I don't think they've made any commitment, to my knowledge, and somebody may be able to clarify that. My issue with these projects really stems from comparison of Douglas County Water Utilities. Douglas County Water Utilities did a rate study, and we did a pretty large rate increase on ratepayers to pay for the infrastructure for that system. I think that the Gardner Ville Ranches GID should be looking to that as a primary funding source for this work as well. They have a large tax base. They have not increased their rates in a number of years, and I think that needs to be part of the solution, which I believe they are talking about. But I am just hesitant on how much the county should commit to this when other water systems aren't getting money from the county to do their own infrastructure projects.
We're not talking about the water distribution pipe and water mains. We're talking about the interconnection, which would be a benefit to the whole county, or at least the two systems. If there was an emergency, one of them was cut off.
For the record, Patrick Cates, there are inner ties between the town of Mindon, Douglas County, and Indian Hills. And it was before my time, but from what I've been told, those water utilities paid for those inner ties themselves.
Commissioners?
On that, I would like to add that at the lake, the Round Hill GID has an inner tie with, I hate to use their acronym stupid, but South Tahoe Public Utilities District. We have inner ties with them as well as other water sources up there, so in the event of a major forest fire, we can all intertie and charge each other. And that was paid for by the district.
Okay, any other questions?
If I may just add one other comment. I do think it's reasonable for the county to help with some of the feasibility of this, certainly the grant writing that Terry talked about. And again, timing's tricky, because I think a lot of the infrastructure money is going to come online. Probably, you know, we've got five years to spend that, and we have less time to spend this money. But I do think there's some preliminary things that we could do to help, and that's why there was a recommendation from staff on the feasibility on the inner tie to pay for that.
Okay, I'm just going to make a final comment with regards to this. And again, this is my district, and this is something that I've been approached on by numerous occasions. But I don't believe that the federal government had printed off and given out all this money during the times these other inner ties came through. Nor do I believe the county, which is going to be paying for a lot of these projects, used ARPA money or federal money for many of these other projects here. This is a one-time, unique situation. And if it's something that's benefiting the tire, the large part of the community, which means that you would have a safety valve in case the water was not able to flow through one of those two systems, you are, and the large segment of our population is in the ranches. So there is an interest in seeing some benefit provided to them with this one-time opportunity that we are paying for through inflation.
Comments well taken. No, no, I said, comments are well taken. Yes, thank you. I guess without further questions, we can go to the next item.
Terry Willoughby for the record. And also, an option would be that you could consider was to direct staff to get some additional information, like how much would design cost? So we could break down these proposals. So it's not 14 million, you would be looking, we could bring it back with part of the project.
Do want to make it clear, I'm not arguing we should be providing the 14 million for the water distribution pipe and water mains. It's the emergency interconnection, I think we're discussing. I mean, the top, the, yeah, the interconnection, inner tie. And I don't even say the whole 2 million, 2.5 million. In fact, I want to make it clear, too, I think we should try, they should, the GID should go very strongly after the infrastructure money being provided through the state. And this may be a moot issue, but in case it doesn't happen, I don't think we should be leaving them high and dry.
Thanks. The next project is the Cale Complete Streets project, 1.4 million, and that's just one piece of the many components of the funding of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the reasons that we recommended this for funding goes back to what I spoke about at the beginning of the meeting. Projects that are shovel-ready. This project is, I believe, at 90% design. Megan Kelly from the Conservation District has been a lead on this project. It's been identified as a priority for the county in the Economic Vitality Plan that the board recently approved. And this is the last bit of funding that they need to make this project go. And if they can secure this funding, they can probably start the work, construction work on it next year, unlike the ones we were just talking about, that I think are in a pretty early stage. There's no design work that's been done or anything of that nature. Thank you.
One thing, excuse me, one thing I'd like to point out is that the Cale Complete Streets project, number one, we are required by TRPA to maintain a certain level of removal of solids going into the lake. And at the present time, we are not accomplishing that goal. And there's so many acrim. And there's so many acronyms involved with the TRPA that it's hard to keep them all straight. But the fact remains that the infrastructure down there has deteriorated to the point where we can no longer guarantee our commitment to the TRPA, as well as the La Houghton and the other water boards involved up there, to do our part to reduce solids being put into the lake. The KAL Complete Streets Project will resolve that. And it will also, more than doing the street repair that is terribly in need of repair, it will also enable the local residents to have broadband and potable water and sewage. All of that will be accomplished through this. And I believe we have someone here that can speak to the entire project, if you'd be so kind?
From the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, I'm a civil engineer that's been working on the KAL Complete Street for the last eight years. So I wasn't going to talk too much unless you had any specific questions for me, because it seems like it's not public comment, so.
I do have a question. Could you explain to this board, what is going to be accomplished by this project?
Sure, yeah, no problem. So the KAL Drive Complete Street will, it's, everything is so interconnected, it's a multi-benefit project. The impetus for the project was 100% stormwater, like Chairman Rice alluded to. There's the Tahoe TMDL, and the county is under an interlocal agreement with the state of Nevada to remove a certain amount of sediment from roads that are within the county, even if the roads are managed by GIDs. The county is on the hook to report to the state of Nevada for this sediment removal. So the impetus for the project was stormwater, making sure that clean stormwater gets to the two county basins at the end of KAL Drive. But then, when we started looking at everything, it kind of opened a can of worms, because there's also a 65-year-old water main that we can't actually do construction near until it's replaced. So it'd be upgrading this water main. The road itself is actually degrading and causing some of the sediment to go into the lake, so it would be road reconstruction. There's, you know, it's the highest percentage of people in Douglas County, according to the census, that bike and walk to work, so adding a sidewalk for them, extending a existing portion of the state line to state line bike path, about 400 feet, just to stop erosion on the adjacent meadow that's owned by the Forest Service from kind of spilling into the roadway. And then finally, undergrounding overhead power and adding broadband, because just to follow the county's dig-once policy, there's so many benefits aesthetically, fire safety. So yeah, overall, it's a really good project. It'll really give that gateway to Douglas County Lake Tahoe a huge facelift. But it will also just have these benefits of, you know, more mobility for the people in the neighborhood, more connectivity to the tourist corridor and the recreation site right there. There's a 200-acre Forest Service meadow right there called Rave Meadow. It connects even to Nevada Beach. And then cleaner stormwater and better water quality, water distribution to the KGID water system. And even Southwest Gas is on board. They have a vintage steel gas line, and they're chipping into the project. So yeah, there's all of these different players, and I could spew off a bunch of acronyms, but we have 2.4 million secured, and we're just looking for the last bit to implement. We think the new price would be 3.8 million, based on bids that are coming in this year in inflation, as Commissioner Tarkanian has alluded to. Yeah.
Good information, all. I'm curious as to how you prevent silt from getting into the lake?
Yeah. At the end of KAL Drive, there's two large, basically ponds, detention ponds, that are both maintained by Douglas County. And so what is happening is there's a series of drainage inlets along KAL Drive, and they're just, they weren't built quite right, like they're inundated with groundwater the whole time. And so our hope is to upgrade those DIs, according to the 90% design. They would be watertight. There would be even more of them than currently there. And then raise the grade of the road and crown it properly. Like, right now, the road, if you drive down there, you could be driving in, like, Fallujah, Iraq or something. It's, it's just like, you might bring your Jeep, you know, or your F-350.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Angles?
As long as we're on this thing. I thought the major impediment was the GID, the KALGID, number one. And shouldn't this be a capital improvement project?
Yeah, I'm not, I guess, I'm a civil engineer, so I can't comment on that type of stuff. But I did meet with the GID a few weeks ago. They do have $200,000 earmarked for this road, but just because of the fact that the road is so far gone, and it's, you know, you can't just put a band-aid on it, because you'll just be throwing away $200,000, and it just requires a whole reconstruction. Our recommendation was to just contribute that to the overall project, so that we could build the correct road. And then maintenance down the road would be more like, you know, reasonable cost of pavement maintenance.
Commissioner Tarkanian?
You know, we've spoken before about this project, and you know I'm all in favor of it. I believe it needs to be done. The question really is how it's going to be paid. So I guess I was going to redirect from you over to Patrick, a couple of questions. I had a town hall last week, and one of the guys who lived up in Lake Tahoe asked the same question, Chairman, well, Commissioner Ango had asked. Why isn't the GID paying for the road repair and maintenance at KAL?
For the record, Patrick Cates, Oliver Park GID is a very small GID. They have a very limited tax base. If I remember correctly, I think their annual budget is about $100,000 a year, and half of that, they pay for snow removal. So they clearly don't have the wherewithal to build a road. And in general, roads, these roads are county roads, and the GIDs maintain them. So it's clearly beyond their ability to be able to rebuild the road.
Okay. I may be confused. This KAL road we're talking about is the road that takes you down to the Tahoe Beach Club. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
The road's built. I was on it the other day. It's deteriorated. It's, you know, it's very poor condition. That's maintaining it, that's not building it.
No, it's rebuilding. The road needs to be rebuilt. Maintenance is like crack sealing and resurfacing. It needs to be built from scratch.
Because it's never been maintained. Because it hasn't been maintained over the years. Now it's gotten so bad, now you want the county to pay for it. So I guess my other question is, just a lot of that damage that's been done to the road was through the construction of the Tahoe Beach Club, because you had all those big trucks coming in and out of there. Plus, that's a pretty high-end project. And I don't know, you know, what the GID can charge or not, but those guys, I mean, one of the homes you sold, condos you sold for $6 million. So we're saying they don't have enough money in the GID to take care of one stretch of a road, which they've neglected for over the years, and now they want the county to pay for all of it. So, I mean, that's the first concern I have. And when we talk about how other water districts paid for their interconnector, and therefore the Rancho Gardner, the ranchos should pay for their interconnector, well, you know, the other GIDs are paying for the maintenance of their roads. I mean, it all comes in full circle. And I guess the question is, how do you best use the money based upon culpability and so forth? And I just don't see how ignoring a road for all these years, and again, I want this built, believe me, I'm not saying not to get built, but how it's going to be done? And I see the GID should be putting in a lot more than that, and you have a very wealthy or expensive development in there, and it's only getting bigger with more big trucks coming through there. Or there's a TLT taxes, or the, is that what, the TLT taxes that could be paying for? But instead, we're going to put a million three up. That's 10% of our, 13% of ARPA money.
So I share, I share Commissioner Tarkanian's concerns about this, and as our county manager knows, I've had some lengthy discussions about this. And I recognize the same aspects of that. We have a lot of construction vehicles that are going up and down that road, that have torn up that road. And there's been no road mitigation funds derived from the Tahoe Beach Club, to my understanding. It's a road that's been neglected for a number of years, and now, all of a sudden, we need to take care of it. We raise, we're dedicated, if I'm not mistaken, we are required to set aside 1% of the TOT tax that's generated in the Tahoe township for roads and transportation projects. That's $1.25 million annual basis, thereabouts, 1.25, okay? That could go a long ways, and I believe that we haven't had any road projects up there recently. So that, in itself, in my opinion, could pay for this versus ARPA funds. So I share Commissioner Tarkanian's concerns that we're devoting 1.4 million to accommodate an extremely small percentage of our county, and yet we can't find the 2.5 million to assist the Gardnerville Ranchos in the inner tie that's a community safety issue up there that services approximately 20% of our population in this county. So I have the same reservations that Commissioner Tarkanian has on this. The GID, the Tahoe Beach Club, the other entities, and the fact that we have, once again, 1% of TOT that has to be used in this, in this, to accommodate these kind of things, that seems to me like a much more useful direction to go. I agree that the road needs to be repaired. I'm disappointed that it's gotten into the disrepair method that it is now. You're talking about other entities that want to pay for bike trails and the other things that have nothing to do with this particular road. And so that's troubling to me, to, that we haven't gotten a better buy-in from the people that actually use this road. But once again, the 1% TOT tax that's required by us, by Nevada Rebi statutes, to go into transportation and road projects in the Tahoe township, I think that's a better expenditure in that regard, rather than this, these funds out of the ARPA funds. But that's, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Nozak?
From a historical respect, when was, when was the KALGID founded?
I don't really have an answer to the Oliver Park GID or when they were founded, but I do know just a little bit of history of the KAL Drive. It was one of the first roads, actually, in Tahoe, because it went to the Sky Harbor Airport that closed in 1940, and it was just a dirt road all the way down from Highway 50 to the Sky Harbor Airport. That was where the Beach Club is located now. One of the issues with the road, and just why it's in such disrepair, is because the road was never quite constructed correctly, because it was such a historic old road, and I don't think the correct, you know, base material was put in correctly. And then there's a lot of different piecemeal projects that have gone under, and they weren't, you know, they didn't, they weren't installed under current county standards. So, starting with a project in 99, where there was a new storm drain system put in, and then all the way through 2000, when there was a new sewer line put in, all of these projects were just trench repairs. And as you know, now, when you, when you do like a storm drain project, you actually have to full-pave the width of the road. And so a lot of the roads' issues are, you know, 30 years old, based on old construction, and it is hard to understand that maybe this small GID could pay for all of the issues that were in place, based on some county projects, some KGID projects, some Douglas County Sewer Authority projects, some utility projects.
And you've outlined all the results of the GID being founded, I'm guessing, before 1940.
Terry Willoughby, 1970.
1970, that's good. That's 30, it's 54 years. And in the meantime, they only get $100,000 a year from the property taxes, and the area around them has just grown up. And you are, you are, you are getting the, quote, "benefit" of that growth, with people running down that road with the big trucks and putting up million-dollar, multimillion-dollar structures on the lake. So I would suggest that perhaps one of two things should happen. The GID should expand its boundaries, or it should be dissolved.
So, Ms. Willoughby, you may have the answer to this, and appreciate that. I think, I think we've had enough of our presentation, so I appreciate that. Ms. Willoughby, how many GIDs do we have in this county? Do you have an idea on that?
Terry Willoughby, I don't know.
Okay. I would suggest it's upwards of, it's over 20, I believe. So my concerns, of course, is when we start dedicating funds to one GID to repair a road, you know, I'm looking certainly at something like Topaz Ranch Estates, who has many, many miles of roads. Those roads, you know, are in bad need, and I drive them on a daily basis, so I know how bad they are. But the minute we start designating funds of one, of this nature, and I'm not suggesting it doesn't have to be done, I'm just saying there's other sources, I believe, that can come to repair that road, as Mr. Tarkanian is articulating, to repair that road versus ARPA funds. You know, these funds, you know, we, we're going to have a plethora of GIDs coming to us, looking for assistance in all these other areas. So, so that's my concerns, commissioners, but once again, we're not, we're going to make a decision on some of this, hopefully today, so.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, there doesn't have to be a decision today, but you could certainly direct staff to research funding opportunities for this. And again, these were the only entities that submitted applications. So we have Grid and the KAL Streets, which is potentially the end.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. I appreciate you being able to answer the questions of the commissioners. That's important. And here we have another question, you know, we're getting, the next one is from a private citizen to repave Trichester, so another request for roads, and that was basically-
Terry Willoughby, so this is, that's correct. This was submitted by a private citizen. It didn't have an actual estimate or any product from engineering. We will be forwarding this over to the Roads Department for inclusion in their plan.
Commissioner Angles, you had a comment?
Yes. We've been wrestling with this KAL Drive GID for over two years, and we've really gotten nowhere, because the main impediment is the GID itself. And there's 27 GIDs in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I knew, I knew the number was somewhere in that direction, but I didn't want to put a specific number on it, because it wasn't really positive, so, thank you. Ms. Willoughby?
The next was a submission, again, by a private citizen for a defensible space program. No cost estimates were submitted, so we didn't have anything to allocate. So we will, that's, of course, a program that the Fire District would be working with us on, so we'll be looking at that later. The next item is $10,000 from the Suicide Prevention Network for the Women's Wellness Conference. I can read that to you. Women's Wellness Conference Empowering the Physical and Mental Wellness Aspects of Life. They have other partners besides the county. They have Family Support Council, Tahoe Youth and Family Closet, and the Food Closet, and other health service partners, including Carson Valley Medical Center, Carson Tahoe Hospital, Blood Mobile, and Madam Oban.
So, so on that one, and I'm always looking for, you know, it's, it's not a question of wanting or not wanting to approve these, but also looking-
or not wanting to approve these, but also looking at other funding opportunities versus these funds. So my question is, I suspect that we are in close proximity to receiving opioid funds, and whether or not those funds could be applied in this area. So that's all I'm suggesting, is maybe we look at another funding source.
Terry Willoughby, I will certainly look in the terms of the settlement. I haven't, we, of course, haven't received any money to date, so I haven't looked at that yet. The next is a submission by the Tahoe Prosperity Center to work, to match the South Lake Tahoe contribution for the, to work on the housing issue at Tahoe. Again, we recommended funding of that.
Excuse me, what's the issue?
Housing of workers.
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Ms. Granahan?
I just wanted to mention that Heidi Hildrum, the CEO of the Tahoe Prosperity Center, who submitted that request, is on the line, is on Zoom, if you had any questions of that one, just to let you know that.
Any questions, commissioners? Okay.
The next is Envision Tahoe, again, submitted by the Tahoe Prosperity Center. We do not recommend that for approval, because we feel there's other funding sources for that. It is a $70,000 spread out over two years to implement the Envision Tahoe Action Plan, which would, which is an economic development action plan for Lake Tahoe. The next item was from Technology Services. This was previously heard by the board. $1.4 million for the public radio system issues. This would be the first year of that, of the actions needed to address some of the issues that Daniel provided to you previously. And this would benefit all of our agencies that participate in the public radio system.
So, as I recall, during our budget discussions, we did, or maybe there was a presentation by Technology Services previously in this regard, identifying the needs to upgrade our radio system. I know that we did have a tremendous lapse in service available during the Tamarac Fire last year. So, but this is just one portion of that. Is that correct?
That's the first year of the plan that he presented to you.
What would be the subsequent year's financial requirements, if this is just the first year?
He is on the line. Marsha, can you?
Daniel, are you able to answer this question for us?
Yeah, I can answer the presentation. Daniel Johnson, for the record, Chief Technology Officer. We had the study done by federal engineering that presented to the board, and it was laid out in various phases. This 1.45 is for the site improvements portion, which was considered the priority for Phase 1. The overall project to include all handheld radios was in the range of $10 million for the study, and it was the conservative cost estimates. Our Phase 2 would be looking at after-site improvements, we'd be looking at the equipment upgrades and the backhaul system for the equipment. And that, I believe, came in just over $1 million for those sections, and then, the subscriber units was a big portion of it. But within the report, they included all the subscriber units. However, our agencies generally purchase their subscriber units, those are the handheld radios, and they've continued to upgrade those through the years, and they purchase them as needed.
So, Mr. Johnson, if we were to approve the, ultimately approve the 1.4 on this, and could not go further with it, could not identify funds to go further with it, would this be a benefit to you or not?
Yes, this would still be a benefit. It would provide the site improvements at our current sites, such as the HVAC conditioning to improve the longevity of equipment that we do put in there, the proper grounding, the proper tower heights, the stability of towers, that sort of thing, is part of the site improvement. So even if we funded this and we're not able to identify any other funding, we would have an improvement in our system. However, our equipment is aging as well, and we would be looking for sources of funding to replace our equipment, you know, after we get the site improvements in place.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Willoughby, we're going to look at other funding sources for the others items.
Yes, that'll be an ongoing effort.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay.
The next item is for the town of Gardnerville. This was approved by their town board, and it's replacement of the mains, it's, we'll install the Main Street Station storm drain, which will carry the storm water down to Martin's Slough. I believe Eric's still here? Eric Nelson's here, town manager, for any questions.
Okay. So, Mr. Nielsen, I did have a question.
Sure. Eric Nielsen, for the record, Gardnerville Town Manager.
Thank you for joining us today. Question for you. I know that we put in box culverts underneath the parking lot of Gardnerville Station. Was that two years ago, or?
Yes.
And so, this would enhance that. So that's just a collection point? Now, we need to channel those somewhere else? Is that what I'm seeing on this?
So what we did was, two years ago, there was a 13,000 cubic foot reservoir put in underneath the parking lot, but right now, there's nothing going into it or out. So when NDOT reconstructs the highway through town in the spring, they are going to connect to that underground reservoir, and now, the town has to pump water out of that reservoir to the Martin's Slough. So this will install the downstream, the downstream culverts. I am under time crunch, because I have to have it in before NDOT repaves the highway, or they won't connect to what I have underneath the ground there. So as the board decides today, I know Ms. Willoughby said, you know, this can be spent 2024, 2026. I have to spend it from September to October this year. So, but that is what it is, to do the outlet piping from that underground detention reservoir.
Okay.
Eliminates flooding along 395 and within some of the downtown area of Gardnerville.
So when you say the realignment, is that what I understood? Spring of 2024, 2023? Is that correct?
Yes. And the latest schedule I have from them was they were going to put a project out to bid this fall for paving the highway through town in the spring, of 2023, sorry.
But that's not, what about the straightening? I thought there was some efforts in regards to trying to straighten the S-curve a little bit as well.
Yeah, they haven't committed to that. I don't know if they're going to do that or not.
Okay. So it seems like it was a little short-sighted, and I'm not blaming, okay, but it seems like it was a little short-sighted to say that we put this reservoir in, but we have nothing coming in and no way of getting it out. So why do we do that?
We had commitment from NDOT to connect to it, and then, we have the funds. We can do, use fine funds to install the outlet. So it wasn't short-sighted, it's going to happen, but we had a CDBG grant to put in the underground reservoir that was going to expire, so we needed to get that in while we still had that funding available.
Okay. So you kind of anticipate the ability to do that, and you have the funding to do that, but if you can get the funding from here, certainly, then you would prefer that?
We will shift funding to take care of some of our roads. We have to do it regardless. But I will say, Commissioner Gardner, in that point, when ARPA came out, there was very limited things you could do with it: sewer, water, storm drain, broadband, and replacement of lost funds. So back when we were really constrained, this was one of the few things that met what ARPA intended, so that's when I submitted the request. But it still meets, you know, what ARPA was originally set up for.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you. I appreciate your, once again, I appreciate your coming and being on hand today.
Terry Willoughby, the next six projects are, were submitted by the town of Genoa. One, two, five. The first is maintenance of the, and these were all approved by the town board on April 8th. First is maintenance and grading of the road. Church foundation repair, $45,000. Then, that's $45,000 for the original, for the design, not the entire project, and feasibility. Four air conditioning units, tree trimming and removal at the park, and painting of the church for $5,650. And they did submit a request for loss revenue, however, they are part of the county, not a separate legal entity, so ineligible for that.
I just had a question with regards to some of these things. Like, would most of the, how would these be paid if there wasn't ARPA funds?
They probably wouldn't go forward, Terry Willoughby. They have a very limited budget for Genoa. They are relying on property taxes and a small amount of C-tax, and so they typically don't have a lot of money to fund additional improvements and repairs.
Maintaining the grade of the road, is that the county's responsibility, or is there a GID that handles that? Well, Ms. Willoughby, while they're cogitating over here, are any of the funds from RDA-1 used on these projects?
No. RDA-1 projects for Genoa are completed and were already done. Only thing in RDA-1 is Mr. Grande.
Mr. Chairman, if you would allow me, I could answer the maintenance and grading of the roads for the town of Genoa.
Sure, please.
Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager, for the record, and twice interim town manager for the town of Genoa, and getting to rework those roads. As you may know from driving through Genoa, they have dirt roads, and those are their responsibility. They put a certain type of a seal, they rework them, regrade them, and put a certain type of seal over them every year to keep the dust down and to really keep those roads up. So that is the responsibility of the town. The town of, the town of Genoa, yes. Hope that helps.
Thank you. And I would, and it was already pointed out, but it seems like tree trimming and removal and the painting of the church are normal maintenance, annual maintenance, you know, needs that should, in my opinion, should be put into their annual budget. So, but Mr. Ingles has something to say.
Ms. Willoughby, do you know offhand how much money is left in RDA-1?
Enough to pay for Mr. Grande, which is like $2.6 million. So there's a $2.3, I think, whatever, however much is for that project is what's left. There's not extra money.
Mr. Chair, I have the Public Works Director, who has indicated he would like to provide some additional information. Phil, can you hear us?
And which item is that on? Is that Mr. Richter?
Yes.
Okay. Which item is that on, Mr. Richter?
Because he's former town manager.
Okay. Commissioners, this is Phil Richter, Director of Public Works. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I will speak on behalf of the town of Genoa, having been the previous town manager there for five-plus years. Items like the, without the road, I'll leave the roads off of this, but items like the AC units, tree trimming, painting of the church, are normal budgeted items, as the commission has asked. I think the difficulty for the town with COVID was when they were not able to hold the candy dance. The candy dance fundraiser generates close to 80% of the town's, or 65, 70% of the town's budget. So in a year where that was not available to them, not the ability to do that, they probably had a loss in net revenue of, so revenue after expenses to put on the candy dance, probably around $120,000. So this, these kinds of programs like this that you're looking at would have to have been deferred or eliminated completely at that point. In the course of a normal year, the revenue from candy dance supports the limited amount of things, as well as proportion to be able to put something into capital reserves. I'm encouraged to reserve, and I will assume, I haven't looked at their budget, but I'll assume that reserves were probably consumed during the pandemic year to provide other services, so.
Thank you, Mr. Richter. Any questions?
No, I'd like to comment. That's a very good reason. I mean, you know, when they shut you down, you can't make any money, and no fault to theirs. That's a good explanation, in my opinion.
Well, then, I will back it up by saying that this last year, when they did have candy dance, it was the most successful candy dance they ever had, and that was last September. So it just seems to me like they could have had funds available. So that's, I hear what you're saying, and so, okay. Thank you, Mr. Richter. So I guess now we're into the town amended?
Terry Willoughby, the town amended submitted for three projects, and we were recommending funding for two. One would be the improvements of the sidewalks from 10th Street to highway, on Highway 395. And the second would be Westwood Park Improvements, which is the park off Ironwood, and that would be to include a splash pad at that location as well. And we were not recommending funding for the street rehabilitation. The town amended had submitted for ARPA funds through the League of Nevada Cities, and were denied through that program.
Questions? Okay. Moving on along.
The next submission was from Trinity Lutheran Child Care Center. They are asking to expand their childcare program, which is a great need within the community, there just isn't enough childcare. So they would use this funding to expand their existing programs. Last submission is Family Support Council, and I, the description says support for revenue loss, but what they're really doing is, and let me share my screen. What they're really doing is to expanding their programs with this money. They do talk about the lost revenue from COVID and how they had to cut back, but they would be expanding their existing programs.
Yes, the only question I have with both those two, which obviously, they're both very important services they're providing, is, would this be a recurring cost if they're expanding the programs, and this is a one-time infusion?
It is, but it's basically because they lost revenue. They were shut down during COVID, so they can't, it's the same as with town of Genoa, where they would have used that revenue during that time from the services provided. Because they were shut down during lockdown, they didn't have the revenue, so now they're asking for funding.
Okay. So I believe that's the conclusion. So my question here is, we need to go to the public for public comment, here in chambers and online, and then, we need to come back to the board for some decisions, some deliberations. Do we need to take a break here before public comment, or? No? Okay, good. Okay. I'm good with that. So at this time, then, this is an action item, so I will open the floor to public comment. Once again, public comment will be limited to three minutes. If you have anything additional to say... Once again, public comment will be limited to three minutes. If you have anything additional to say on any of these items. And then we'll go to online public comment.
Hi, thanks for having me again. This is Megan Kelly from the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District for the Record, also a resident of Stateline, Nevada. I just wanted to clear up a few misconceptions about the Cale Drive area, and just to make sure, there was a couple of things that I wanted to get across. Wanted to let everybody know I have secured 2.4 million for construction from entities such as the U.S. Forest Service, the Nevada Division of State Lands, Oliver Park GID, the Nevada Energy Utility, Southwest Gas, and the Kingsbury GID, who has a water line. There are also a little bit of funding for trails from NDOT. It would, would have been really helpful if during the permitting process for the Tahoe Beach Club, that maybe there was some sort of permit requirement to rebuild the street after construction, but that was not in the permit. And so now, although I do plan to ask them for funding, it is hard to do so without a permit condition or, or some sort of hammer. You know, I'm just, I'm just one civil engineer who works for a conservation district up there. I don't really have any regulatory authority. I know, I know the TRPA would like to require something like that, but they, they can't necessarily, since the project's already been permitted. So if the county for future developments might consider some sort of permit condition like that, that would be helpful. I did want to remind that the county, Douglas County, is on the hook for the TMDL obligation from the drainage issues along the road. And so that is why the county has a vested interest in repairing the road, unlike some other roads that are just exclusively in GIDs. I would also like to say that we could accept something like 600 or 700,000, and then try to leverage the final 600 to 700,000 from private or other grant sources, like the state Water Revolving Fund, or the Tahoe Beach Club, or Barton, or some other developers in the area. And then the last thing is, like I said, like Patrick alluded to before, we're trying to break ground by 2023, so that we don't throw away more money putting Band-Aids on the road. And I think that is the end of my public comment. So that's why it's a little bit more, I guess, of an in your, in, immediate issue than other, other projects. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
James McCallum, for the record, I was wondering if I could have a minute before I start my comments to respond to some of the things that were said earlier? Is that okay, or?
I'll allocate that, sure.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. We are reevaluating water rates. The problem for us is we have a great deal of low-income people at certain parts of the ranchos. So we're trying to evaluate water rates as gently as we can to those who live on Social Security or, or are young families. So we are looking into water rates, and we're going to have to look into a whole system of tiered water rates in order to be gentle to the people who can least afford it. Again, we're working on a water master plan. I mentioned Gardnerville Water, they had agreed in principle to the enter type, but not to funding it. The Carson Water Subconservancy, we were hoping for a grant, and we never heard back anything, so I don't think that's going to happen. So just to respond to those things. I am a trustee for the Gardnerville Ranchos GID. I'm not speaking for that board. I moved to the ranches nine years ago, and I enjoy the community. However, issues involving the ranchos and water increasingly concern me. Though the availability for water to serve our current residents is fine, we're, we're okay. Cannot sustain all the areas designated as receiving areas. The master plan was passed, there was no thought given to removing that designation. We are already the largest community in the county, well over 4,000 homes, I believe we're 22% of the population. The grid does a good job of providing water, sewer, roads, parks, and other services. I say that because it often seems the county just doesn't know we're here. It's been made clear to us we're not a priority. If you look at that list of items that you had, not too many said ranchos on them. There was a lot of Mendon, Genoa, Lake. And when there's been projects suggested in the ranchos, you see felt pens for roads that are never built, secondary accesses that didn't happen, like Rain Shadow. And we maintain our roads. We do a good job maintaining our roads. The, the ranchos urgently needs to undergo the pipeline replacement, that is 14 million dollars. And it's what's hurting us in terms of paying for this enter tie. I think without that, the enter tie would have already been built. The, it is surprising the largest water system in the county is not connected to anything else. I think it's, it behooves the county to be able to move water from one place to the other. We have fires, potential earthquakes, we are right on earthquake fault. We can have damage to water lines, not just the ranchos, but the whole county can benefit from being able to move water. It's essential that as we go forward with a water master plan for the county, that we take that into consideration. I think the enter ties should have been done 20 years ago. When you get on a board, sometimes you'll find out there are things that you got to do that you think should have been done before you got there, and the enter tie is one of them. When I heard about the ARPA funds in the first place, and I saw that there was a priority for water and sewer infrastructure, and I got excited about that, there was a good chance to get some help. The, I thought the ranches for once would be a priority, but when the money was moved to the general fund, there was no money for us. Given our history, it's not a surprise. At least we're mentioned, but next to the words, "No funding, get a grant." And I hope we can get a grant, and I appreciate having somebody whose job is to write grants to give us a hand. So I hope we can get that help, and I hope that our 11,000-plus residents can be appreciated, and that we can get something done, and just get some help to get this done. I think it's urgent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Are there further comment, public comment here in chambers? Ms. Garen?
Hi, Shoneyne Garen again, Administrative Services Manager for the Recorder's Office and Records Management. I thought I would provide a little additional information for you on the item that you heard for the digitization project on behalf of Community Development and the Assessor's Office. And I just wanted to, I looked back through the support documentation, what they're talking about there, because Commissioner Noah said, to your point, it's a fair sum of money for a scanning project. This is 600 boxes of records. And many of these are large format blueprints and things that take certain types of technology to capture the images properly. And so I just wanted to provide that additional layer of information for you. And one of the things that Tom and I discussed, Tom Delara and I discussed, was making sure that even though the, the going-to-bid process is not the same in this, in this instance, he did reach out to other vendors to see if anyone else was available in the northern Nevada region to facilitate a project of that size, because clearly, we don't want to be shipping 600 boxes of records out of state. These are all permanent records, and PDI, Precision Document Imaging, was the only one that was available to do that size of a job locally. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
How long does it take to do 600 boxes of documents?
That, I'm not sure. I know there's, there's a wide variety of elements that are contained in those boxes. Some of them are in little file jackets, some of them have, they're not all scan-ready, so paper clip removal, all of those things take time. I believe that's probably set out, there's probably some timelines set out within the actual construct of the quote that PDI provided. Again, I was just kind of on a consult end of this project, more so than being real into the weeds on it. This is just a little bit of oversight knowledge that I have for you.
Okay, so for right now, the $599,000 is a guess at 600 boxes of data?
That's the quote that was provided by the vendor. Yes. They, they came out, the vendor actually did come out, we arranged for them to come out to the warehouse, and they did come out and take a sample box with them back to their facility, so that they could provide a meaningful quote on what type of workload it would be to, to manage those records. Yes.
So would that, would that process take place here in the county, or would it take place off-site?
I think because of the equipment that will be needed to facilitate the scanning, the large format scanners, more than likely, what they'll do is they will come and, and take a certain amount of boxes at a time, and then take them to Reno, and be able to manage it that way. That probably is a more reasonable expectation. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Now we can hear from you.
My apologies. Kevin May, I'm the president of East Fork Professional Firefighters. I'm also an active firefighter here in the community. I'd just like to, as I was sitting here and listening to discussion, different things came into my mind. My first saying is, thank you guys for hearing us all. It means a lot. I know you have some big decisions to make, so for you guys to take the time to hear all of us as we tie into your lunch, clearly, I'm a big lunch guy. So I get how important it is. Our guys, as you guys know, many of you have reached out to members of our organization, our firefighters thanked us for being on the front lines, being committed. I know there was a question about the rec earlier, and although I wasn't involved in the rec and don't have details, that is a good example of when there's a potential for us to place another rescue from reserve in service, because they may be out of service for hours. So that would be, just from a firefighter's perspective, a reason why we keep those on reserve, not just mechanical issues. When we talk about the rebuilding of the fire truck, how Chief stated, we already have the chassis with COVID right now in fire camps. We are separated more than ever. We're living out of those trucks, basically, in camp, so we could be living in those for 21 days at a time. Having the bigger, more modern chassis for the urban interface, and for accommodating us in the COVID environments of fire camp, which still actively exist, are super important to us in today's world. As Chief mentioned, for us, we've put a lot of time into this organizationally. We are turnkey, we're ready to do these. We are, these for us are time-sensitive items because of the price, and just the limited stock, as you guys are aware, of vehicle availabilities out there, especially when you get into specialized apparatus like ambulance and fire engines. So thank you for your guys' time. Thank you for considering it, and hopefully you have a good lunch.
Thank you. We actually may get into the dinner hour. Hopefully not.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment here in chambers? Sensing none, Ms. Johnson, is there any public comment online?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. I do have two people online who has indicated they would like to provide public comment. Phil, do you have public comment on this item?
Yes, Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. Commissioners, I know you heard today from Gardnerville Ranchos GID and some of the other towns in terms of some, some water projects, and specifically water projects and enter ties. And I wanted to bring to your attention that Douglas County Utilities, the water utility in particular, is not taxpayer-funded. It's not part of the general fund. It is, it is an enterprise fund, and essentially, an independent entity, just like a GID, or one of the towns is in that respect. We specifically did not submit, and it's a, so if you're going to go back for consideration, I would want to be able to submit then as well, for your consideration, projects within our utility, which are high-dollar events as well, that we will be going out for the independent infrastructure bill funding on, as the appro, as what we thought was the appropriate way to deal with this, and not through these ARPA funds. For example, when you talk about critical enter ties, we have three isolated water systems in the south part of our county. The Jones Peak, these Stricken Acres and Sierra Country State Systems, that are each independent water systems serving independently large populations, that have no ability to have an enter tie. We have no funding for that right now, but with an, with infrastructure bill, we'd be looking to enter tie those systems. We have multiple systems at the lake. The Z Wood and K Rock systems are not enter tied either. And we are working to see if we can submit for those types of programs to enter tie those systems as well. But, but just in general, I wanted to just point out that you did not see any requests from Douglas County Utilities, which is separate from Douglas County, specifically for the reason that we feel that the, those requests really need to go for infrastructure bill funding because of the order of magnitude of those requests, not, and, and not tap into this nine, the first nine million that the county was, has received. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Richter. Ms. Johnson, additional?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have another person online who has indicated they would like to provide public comment. Steve, do you have public comment on this item?
Yes, Ms. Johnson, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chairman Gardner and members of the Douglas County Commission. Steve DeShere, a longtime resident and business owner, and someone very familiar with the Cale Complete Streets project. I know you are faced with a lot of tough decisions today, lots of needs and different types of money to meet those needs. I did want to reinforce the comments that Ms. Kelly made under public comment for you this afternoon, and that it is the county that has the total maximum daily load water quality requirement from the state of California, or excuse me, the state of Nevada, that is the Department of Environmental Protection. And she also indicated that the project could accept 600 or 700,000 dollars from the ARPA funds, and I think that would be a very cost-effective way for the county to address its TMDL requirements. And also, key, I know this has been part of your discussion today, which projects are shovel-ready or ready to go to expend the funds most expeditiously. So appreciate the fact that you have some hard decisions to make. I think there's a lot of complicated history with regard to the road, but really, what is amazing to me is how Megan and the people before her, as the head of the Nevada Tahoe Conservation District, have been able to assemble so many different funding sources to help make this project go forward. And so something along the lines of 600 or 700,000 from the ARPA funds that are before you for action today would really very much be appreciated by so many people, and I think would be a cost-effective way for Douglas County to meet its TMDL requirements. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, any additional?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. There's no further public comment online at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to bring it back to the board now. As I indicated earlier today, I see us having basically three options as a board. One is to approve this as presented. The second one would be to cherry pick, and the third one would be to table this for a later date, to allow us, the board, and public to have additional input on this before we make a choice in picking winners and choos, winners and losers. So the third option is, is something that I would like to entertain with the board, is, is to table this item for a time period of 90 days. That would give us, as a board, the opportunity to really vet this a little bit further, and take additional public comment, and, and see where we are on this. Because I, I am not prepared yet. You know, like I said, we just got this a few days ago, and, and it's a lot of information to go through. There's a lot of money to spend here, and I want to make sure we're doing it in a correct manner. So anyways, that's my feeling, is I would, I would prefer to see this tabled, but I'll see what the rest of the board has to say. Mr. Commissioner Turkinian?
I, I want to concur with you, and I also want to say, I, I think all these projects are really great projects, the question's, and needed projects. The question's going to be, you know, how do we allocate the funds that we have with it, and is there other avenues of? it, and is there other avenues of revenue that might be able to pay for them? I don't see how we can make that decision after just having this package for a few days. And I did, I went through it for hours to try to understand it the best I can. I had a number of questions coming in here today. Some of them have been answered, but I still have some others. So I would concur with you. I don't think we should rush into it unless there's projects, and I don't know about the fireman's request and the sheriff's request, if there's projects that need to be done to provide for the safety of our community, then maybe we should move those up. But I do think with the rest of them, we should be a little more careful. This is a one-time opportunity.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I think that sixty days is pushing it out a little too far. I know that, okay, I think sixty days is too far. I would suggest that anything that has to do with public safety, we go ahead and approve today and then look at the rest of them later. I know that the fire department is under the gun, the sheriff department is under the gun. These are things that need to be done, need to be done now. And my suggestion would be to go ahead and approve all of the requests from DCSO in the recommended funding that has been put before us, as well as for the East Fork Fire, and approve those things that had recommended funding for both the sheriff department and the fire department, and then we can revisit the others later.
Commissioner Engels.
That's okay, but we've got to think about Eric Nelson, because you have a timeframe
Thank you, Eric Nelson, for the record. I appreciate that, Commissioner Engels. Yeah, I have to have committed ANDOT and have to have it installed. Talk about shovel-ready. I'm through the permitting process, and I would put my storm drain out to bid by mid-June to have it, or mid-May, so in three weeks, to have it awarded July 2nd, so I could start construction in mid-August.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Engels.
I'm for going through some of these items, getting them approved, bringing back some of the others. For example, Cale Drive, that goes back to last year when I was chairman. I'd talked to Patrick Cates about it. We'd start to work on it, and boom, all of a sudden we find out and run into the impediment that it's a GID. And we were for the improvements to Cale Drive back then. That was way before COVID. So, well, I guess it wasn't before the funds were made available. And, you know, there's other things that need to be discussed, too. So to bring some of these items back, yes. And to take care of some of them now, yes. Thank you.
On a follow-up, I agree with getting whatever's an emergency that needs to be done now, if that includes the Gardnerville Culvert. With respect to the fire, I mean, the public safety, that was something that I had mentioned. I certainly agree with it, but Sheriff Coverly said there were some of these things that he didn't absolutely have to have right now. I think the things that he needs to have right now, which I believe Ms. Willoughby gave us at least two of them, we should vote on and agree with. And the other two, maybe we can get more input from him and see how urgent it is and see if there's other money that may come in. So I agree with what you said, but I would limit the ones for the DS.
There's no other money.
What's that?
The other money would have to come from the general fund. So if you don't approve the sheriff's, then he won't have any money.
If this is, if the sheriff needs all four of those things to run an efficient safety for our community, I'm absolutely for it. But listening to him talk, it didn't seem like there was an urgency on that. You know, my problem is this, and I said from the point, when we first got this money, and I discussed with Mr. Cates, that this had to be well-thought-out, we needed to have a lot of input from the county commission. We were provided this three or four days ago. I've done the best I can to go over it as best as I can. I had some questions. They all have been answered. I don't want to hold up anything that we really need.
That's fine. I agree with you. I'm agreeing with you. But I think, I just want to let you know, you said, "Find other money." There is no other money for those things, for some, for those in particular. So I'm not saying we shouldn't prioritize those.
If you believe, talking with Sheriff Coverly, or maybe we can bring it up at the next agenda, that these items are necessary, I'm all for it. I'm going to vote for them. I'm not going to tie his hands. If they're not, I just think we should wait and maybe make a little bit more informed decision.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rice.
I noticed that Ms. Willoughby did a marvelous job pairing these down so that we are well under the funding available by almost two hundred thousand dollars. And at this point, we're going to have to fund the sheriff's request one way or another. And it would seem to me that, but the money is available, the ask is there, and I think that there are three areas where we ought to approve today so we can get things rolling, which would be all four requests for DCSO, as well as the requests from East Fork Fire for the engine retrofit, the ambulance, and the gurneys, as well as taking care of the problems there regarding the...
To the rest of the sixty days.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad, to fund all four items from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, which includes the Tahoe jail cameras, the one Bearcat, the JALIC court cameras, and the UV Angels. The three items from East Fork Fire, the wildland engine retrofit, the ambulance and the ambulance gurneys, and also approve the town of Genoa request for two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the storm drain.
Gardnerville.
Gardnerville. What did I say?
Genoa.
Okay, sorry. It's, Genoa is just below that, so I had a little bit of sight issue there. Okay, the town of Gardnerville. So correct that for the record. Okay, so that's motion by Commissioner Rice, and to bring back the rest of this within sixty days. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad. Further discussion? Sensing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. So we will go out for public comment, and allow the commissioners also to take further looks at this for their development.
And Terry Willoughby for the record, I thank you for your input. Just wanted to remind the board, we did do an extensive public outreach to get the applications. So even though you may see someone that you think should be on here, that means they didn't submit an application.
Thank you. Well, that was a daunting task, but I appreciate the diligence of the commissioners and the public in trying to whittle this down. It's never an easy process when you're going through this type of thing. So today, we've completed the CIPs, and we've doled out some of the American Rescue Plan requests, and then we'll look at the rest of it. We'll see what we have left over in funds and come back to us. So at this time, we will go into closing public comment. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. I want to emphasize the, within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners. Quite often, sometimes we have members of the public who think that we have greater jurisdiction than we do, that's allowed by NRS. So anyways, if you could keep your public comments to what we specifically can try to have impact on, I would appreciate it. Is there any public comment here in chambers? Mr. Carlini, you could come forward and at least thank us for your... And you too, Mr. Nelson, but anyways, okay. Sensing no public comment here in chambers, we, oh, oh, Mr. Bernie, Mr. Curtis is going up to...
His first name is Bernie, but...
Yes.
On behalf of East Fork, thank you very much. Sincerely.
Thank you. Okay, sensing no other further public comment, I would ask Ms. Johnson if we have any public comment online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Marsha Johnson, for the record. At this time, there's no closing public comment online.
Even better. Mr. Engels.
Post-meeting, could I have audience with Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you.
Yes. I would remind you, I don't know if you can take that into the back room, because in order for staff to leave here, we have to have this room secured. So, thank you. That, the meeting of April 26, 2022 is adjourned. Thank you.